Good evening. The time is now six o'clock. This is a meeting of the regular city council successor agency to the redevelopment agency, housing authority, groundwater sustainability agency, and public financing authority of the city of Vacaville. I will now do roll call. Council authority member Sullivan.
Here.
Council agency authority member Stockton.
Here.
Council agency authority member Ritchie.
Here.
Council agency authority member Silva.
Here.
Council agency authority member Wiley. Council or vice chair, vice mayor Roberts, mayor chair Rolet. There being no vice mayor and mayor here tonight to proceed the meeting, I am going to appoint council member Sullivan to take over as chair of the meeting for this evening.
Is that a vote on it or we're good to go?
We're good to go.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan, members of the City Council. So as you can see tonight, we're shorthanded tonight, and I just want to point out to the council and those in attendance tonight and those viewing tonight's meeting that in order to approve any ordinance or resolutions tonight, we need a full four affirmative votes from the council before you tonight because that represents a majority of the full body seven council members. So that being said, item six E, we have a is an item that council member Stockton would normally recuse himself from, which means that we would no longer have a quorum in order to approve that item tonight. So we are recommending that that item be removed from tonight's agenda and placed on the August ninth agenda. Other than that, that is the only change that we have before you tonight.
Thank you, City Manager. Council, do I have approval to approve the agenda stated?
Motion approved.
Motion second? Motion second? Oh, you'll have to help me tonight, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously passes. All right, approval of the minutes. Got a motion to approve, have a second?
Second.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously passes? All right, we're moving along here. All right, we're moving to section five, our presentations. We have a very, very special presentation tonight. It's someone that I have actually known in the city of Vacaville for probably the last 10 or 15 years, and has really dedicated a significant portion of her adult life to our children, our seniors, and our parks and recreation programs. So we have a presentation of the proclamation for director of Parks and Recreation, Carrie Walker, in honor of her retirement. And so I'm going to read a few bits of the proclamation, Carrie, and we'll have you come on up and have you say a few words if you're comfortable, and we'll go from there. Whereas we are here today to recognize and celebrate Carrie Walker's retirement and her 20 years of outstanding service to the city of Vacaville. Carrie began her career here on June 17th, 2002. She started as a supervisor and worked her way all the way up to the director of the agency. She was made the director on October 16th, 2006, during the Great Recession, which we all remember, and it was a pretty brutal time to be in city services. Carrie led her team through many cuts and reductions and changes. The city recognizes the many endeavors that the Parks and Recreation Department has accomplished under her guidance, specifically the Al Patch Park, Corderos Park, Magnolia Park, the rebuilding of the Great Wonders Playground, establishing several new events and really building up her team. In recognition of her leadership during COVID-19, Carrie led her team and garnered the support of local Vacaville businesses to provide approximately 8,000 meals to local seniors in need. And Carrie was instrumental in opening 24-hour evacuation centers when fires plagued Vacaville. So again, you know, Carrie rolled up her sleeves and jumped right in. Now therefore be resolved, Ron Rolet, the mayor of the city of Vacaville, on behalf of the city council, do hereby present this proclamation to Carrie Walker as a testament to her faithful and dedicated services, which she's performed over the last 20 years. Thank you so much for your service, Carrie, and we'd love to have you come up and say a few words if you're comfortable.
I will be brief. I just want to say thank you so much. It's been an honor to serve the city of Vacaville. I've had the opportunity to live and work, work in and for the city in which I live, and raise my family here, and those children have had an opportunity to participate in all of the wonderful programs that the Parks and Recreation Department offers. So I just feel truly blessed, and I'm very thankful and just want to let you know what an amazing Parks and Recreation Department team that you have here. Each and every day, they work hard, they work tirelessly to enrich and enhance the quality of life for our residents here in Vacaville. And again, I just, I thank you so much. It's been a ride, sometimes a wild ride, sometimes a bumpy ride, but again, I feel truly blessed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Walker, and I've got this proclamation for you here. Okay, you might have some surprises, and thank you folks. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. And let's give Director Walker one more hand round of applause. Thank you, Director Walker. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Council, we are removing six E for future discussion. Are there any other items that council would like to pull for discussion? No? Good. Would the public like to pull any items for discussion on consent? No? Okay. All right, I will take a motion to approve the consent calendar minus six E. Got a motion, a second? Second? Motion a second? All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye? Unanimously passes? All right, here, give me one second. Okay, we are moving on to item seven, business from the floor, and it looks like we have a lot of business from the floor tonight, which is great. So we're going to open up business from the floor. You'll have three minutes to speak from the podium. We take people first come, first served. Sometimes it's sort of awkward when there's business from the floor. We can't respond back to you because the items aren't agendaized. So if you bring up something or bring up a concern and we sit here kind of cold, it's nothing personal, it's just we can't respond back for the Brown Act. So we're happy to hear your complaints and have the staff deal with those and address those at a later meeting. So we will start with Ms. Dean.
My name is Dana Dean, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Nextera Energy and the Corby Storage, Energy Storage Project. I'm joined by Stephen On, the project manager, and I have just a few comments. Most basically, I'm going to say that I'm embarrassed. I'm embarrassed really for all of us that we are forced to be in a position to present to you in a public setting the city's several failures in the processing of our application. But here we are. I've long believed the narrative from the city of Vacaville that it supports bringing new businesses in, so very supportive of green energy projects, and most especially respectful of the rights of property owners. Unfortunately, the city's handling of the Corby Battery Project tells a very different story. You received today a fairly substantial letter detailing out the many delays and frankly, the many incidents of disrespect to my clients. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time detailing that. I'd rather tell you kind of a narrative, my narrative, of what happened here. You have in your hand a bird in hand. You have a bird in hand. It's a little bird, and it uses limited resources, really 24 acres of a 1,400 acre area on the end, not the middle. And it, in exchange for those resources, it gives the school district resources, it gives the city resources, and most especially, it gives the property owner long-term sustained reliable income. Starting right away, this bird has been held hostage for many, many months, I think in the hope that a giant Thanksgiving turkey will arrive and feed everyone. The unfortunate truth is, you have not fully set the table for that turkey. For seven years since the general plan was adopted, you've had an opportunity to work through what needed to be worked through, and there's a lot that still needs to be The only thing we've been offered is that we will be released to go away. The last thing I want to mention is the power to make the decision on this project belongs to you, the city council, not to your staff. And we are asking you tonight, as we have, to put the merit hearing on the next agenda so that we can move forward, so that you have the opportunity to authorize or not, but to use the power that is instilled only in you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. City Manager, I assume we have her contact info to follow up? Thank you. Hello?
Good evening, council members. It's great to be here tonight and give you the name, City Manager. I'm here representing the Vacaville Neighborhood Boys and Girls Club. My name is Anna, and not only do I represent the board, but Michelle, president of Vacaville Social Services and Opportunity House is here as well. Just wanted to share with you that, you know, our organization continues to work with those in need in our community. I know that specifically for the Boys and Girls Club, you know, we've been proud to work through all the challenges that we have in COVID and now coming out of COVID and staffing shortages, but I'm looking forward to this year returning to serving almost 1,000 kids annually. And I believe the four of you here tonight understand the important work that we do. We've been able to make adjustments and be flexible and answer the need of the community, especially as it relates to childcare and the out-of-school time. And I could say the same about Vacaville Social Services, too. What I wanted to come up here and talk to you about tonight was that, you know, a few years ago, we had stood before the council, and we wanted to have a conversation about Measure M and how Measure M could support CBOs, community-based organizations. As we move into a recession, I almost feel like we already are into one, the families that we serve are the ones that are hardest hit, not just through the pandemic, but coming out of. And of course, now that we're moving into economic harder times, it's going to be more critical that we're there to support them, too. And so what I'd like to ask is that the council have this formal, you know, discussion again regarding use of Measure M to support the work that community-based organization and nonprofits do. And that is my request for tonight, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dean, I appreciate it. And one of the things, folks, I didn't mention really quick, sorry, rookie mistake, this little light timer here, green is good, yellow means you're running out of time, red means you're out of time, the mic will also flash, so just if you come up and speak, that gives you some good cues in terms of time for your three minutes. Hello, sir, how are you?
Good evening, City Council and staff. My name is Kyle Sworns. I'm a field representative for Carver's Local 180 in Solano County, and I represent roughly 2,000-plus members in this region. I'm here tonight to support Nextera Energy and give them the merit hearing they deserve. I'm asking council to direct staff to get the Corby Energy Storage Project on the next agenda. Corby Energy Project will create good jobs for the men and women building this project, will also create good source of tax revenue for the city, for the county, and for the schools. I'm not sure if the council or staff is aware, but there was legislation signed in on June 30th of this year allowing developers like Nextera an alternative option to working with local governments and can now seek permits from the California Energy Commission for projects by Corby. Nextera has been trying to work with the city and be a good partner. Please don't force their hand to seek other avenues like California Energy Commission. Allow the council to hear them out and allow the residents an opportunity to be heard on this project. Again, please get the Corby Energy Project on the next agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Public comment? Open comment for items not on the agenda? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
Tony Morash, I'm a Vacaville resident and also president of the Solano Community Tennis Association. We appreciate the opportunity to share our message about tennis in Vacaville and Northern Solano County with you tonight. Pre-pandemic, the local tennis community was primarily home-based to three In Shape Clubs in Vacaville and Fairfield, each one with a resident pro. There was a lot of activity on the public courts because their needs were being taken care of at those clubs. 27 lighted courts at those clubs. During the pandemic, In Shape changed policies, deleted their tennis director position, and restricted membership or entry to members only. When USTA started league play again last spring of 2021, we were looking for a place to play. We inventoried all the public courts in Northern Solano County, municipal school district and college, and decided a four-court complex at Centennial Park best met the requirement for multiple courts and a restroom. City staff was very supportive in making that happen. Elizabeth Frisante, public courts, I mean, Parks and Rec Supervisor, worked with USTA in North Cal, add Centennial Park Courts to the USTA facility list. We initially paid rental fees to use those courts as they were almost rental rooms until we incorporated as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and then negotiated a special use striping facility to continually play on the courts. Elizabeth also contracted with Solano Tennis to provide non-league procentic tennis activities on the courts. The city has also responded to requests for court cleanup, lead abatement, net replacement, and additional trash can. The Centennial Park Courts are far from ideal for organized tennis. You, Hestrom, and the city park planners told me many times that prevailing high winds there alone make it questionable as a place to play. Beyond that, there's no player benches, no shade, no spectacular seating, no water fountains, minimum space between courts, too few courts for league play, and restrooms a long ways away. But it's what we have right now. The pool of play is the only place we have. Those four unlighted courts are the de facto home base for the Northern Solano County tennis community, accommodating as much as possible of tennis activities that used to occur on the 27-lighted court at In Shape. The SCTA mission is to keep tennis alive and growing in Vacaville and Northern Solano County. A big part of the dream is finding a home base for the tennis community. The Centennial Park Courts, imperfect as they are, currently serve that purpose. Now, we recognize that pickleball is a growing sport and has a legitimate need for courts here also. I submit that with 17 municipal courts, Vacaville is positioned much better than most other local communities to accommodate the needs of both the tennis and pickleball communities. I've spoken with George Kennedy, who is the pickleball ambassador, and I sense that we can work together and with city staff to build a plan for court assignments and markings going forward that would allow Centennial Park to become or be developed as a regional tennis center. Thank you.
We are already in conversation. Awesome, thank you, sir. Okay. Hey, Aaron, is the sound a little low or is it me? Okay, okay, I was like, am I losing my hearing or yeah, okay, all right. Hello, for you guys to... Hello, welcome.
My name is Bobby Jacoby, and I'm here to represent the Solano Community Tennis Association. I have been a captain for way too many teams, but I just wanted to share that most adults that participate in tennis, they want to be a part of the league. This offers us an opportunity to be a little bit competitive and to be social. And a lot of those leagues, we require either three, four, or five courts. And each league, I mean, they have leagues throughout the year, throughout the year, and some of those leagues overlap. We can't play tennis matches at night because there's no lights. That means all the tennis matches have to be squeezed into Saturday and Sunday. There are three slots for Saturday and Sunday for a total of six. That's where we get to play. And SCTA has kind of tried to put us in those slots. However, finding enough room is hard. This past season, we had 11 teams, 11 teams for six slots. And that just makes it complicated, but we did it. I even asked Parks and Recreation, Elizabeth Frisante, she was very helpful. That way my team can play out of Three Oaks. That way I could, we could relieve, relieve some of the pressure off of, oops, sorry, Centennial Park. Since the pandemic, the tennis popularity has grown. It has grown by almost 5 million participants that want to play tennis. That's an increase of 27% within our, within our community. And also the programs that the Vacaville, city of Vacaville that offers us through the clinics and through lessons and all that, that feeds into leagues. People want more. Also, as new people move into the community, they have contacted the Solano Community Tennis Association of where can we play? How do I get back into the leagues? And so we have fielded a lot of questions, pointing them in the right directions to coaches, captains like me, hey, somebody's trying to get in, and we try to incorporate that. There are, since the In Shapes have closed, there's...
I'll be getting right towards the end.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Please finish your thought, no worries, but you're getting right towards the end there.
Okay. Bottom line is, post-pandemic, we don't have enough courts to play. So we are asking you if we could keep that in mind as we're trying to make tennis available.
Got you. Thank you very much. Hello?
Don't start the timer yet, I got to make sure it's down low enough.
Okay, don't worry, you can give me a thumbs up when you're ready.
Okay.
All right.
My name is Leanne, and I am a lifelong Solano County resident. I began playing tennis in 2016 with my 10-year-old son. He started taking lessons at a local fitness club, and I wanted to play with him. It did not take long for our local tennis community to notice and welcome my family to their family. And we were out on the court several times a week, lessons, clinics, pickup games, competitive play. That was all a part of our regular routine. And then early in 2020, the pandemic hit, and life as we knew it came to a halt. Everything shut down, and I personally placed our club membership on hold. And then something amazing happened. Tennis was recognized as a minimal-contact sport that was safe to play. The city put back up the nets, and with the gyms and the clubs reeling in this uncertainty, we went out to the public courts. With so much changing around us, our sport kept us connected, and we came to appreciate our local park systems more than we ever had before. So shame on us for not playing at the parks five years ago, but it's different now. This is a choice that we're making. And even though things are closer to normal, what we knew them to be before the pandemic, it isn't the same. Gyms and clubs are back, but many of my tennis friends and family have not rejoined. My own family no longer has a membership at the club we used to go to. Just like others, the pandemic changed how we budget our money and where we're going to spend our money and our time. Now, more than ever, the park systems in and around my community offer an attractive alternative to the high cost of a gym membership. But we crave competitive play. Bobby tried to outline the very specifics of it, and thankfully, the recently formed Tennis Association and the responsive city government, we're getting there. It's coming together. We're based out of Centennial Park, we have the bare minimums, we can reserve a court, and we can go pee. That's not enough. That's just not enough. And just so you understand, several of our teams are coming out on top in the Napa-Solano area. We're competitive, and we're moving up. And we go and we compete for the general Northern California area. Nobody knew a Vacaville team. We didn't have a Vacaville club. We had In Shape. But now we're Centennial, and they know who we are.
Again, you're getting real close to...
One last thought. The city of Vacaville is being very well represented by us, and honestly, we look forward to getting the same respect back from the city for us. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Leanne. Hello?
Hi. My name is Robyn Sickler. I'm also here on behalf of SCTA, speaking again in the continued narrative on tennis in this community and our family, and my focus is on our tennis family. I started my tennis journey in 2009 in the Brentwood, California area over in Contra Costa County. I had no idea that my decision to join that club back then would change my life forever. I bought a $50 racket at Costco and started coming out and playing on their 12 beautiful lit tennis courts that they had just built. Pretty soon, the pro came out, said, hi, how you doing? What's your interest level? He introduced me to members that were creating teams, and pretty soon, I was on a USTA team for the first time in my life and competing. And for someone like me, who's very type A and has been competing her entire life since the age of four, this filled a void for me. Tennis was, has had a huge impact on my life, and, you know, one of the things that's wonderful about tennis is that if you're an athlete as a younger child and you have all these abilities to, to compete in different sports and things, you lose that as an adult. Tennis gives you that ability to continue that competition in your life and then fill that void and make friends along the way. The friends that I made at spare time over in Brentwood are still my lifelong friends and to this day are still in my life. We, I ended up moving from Contra Costa County here to Solano County, where actually I was raised from the fourth grade on in Benicia. But coming to Vacaville, I did not know if I would find another tennis family, and I spent a few years searching for it. I eventually landed at In Shape Browns Valley, where I did end up finding that tennis family again, and I was ecstatic. We did clinics, we competed at sectional championships, we socialized on and off the court, we were an absolute family. And then 2020 happened, like everything else, and it went away. A year or so into the pandemic, it was becoming very clear that tennis would never be the same and that we would not ever have what we had at that club level. We, the pros were gone, the weights had been taken out from the gym and put onto the tennis courts where they destroyed our tennis courts. We no longer had access for any kind of USTA competition. I will tell you, I'm emotional, I cried several times during the course of that year, knowing that I had lost it all over again for the second time, and would it ever come back? We had ice machines, we had waters, water machines, we had bathrooms, we had a room to host tennis gatherings after matches, all kinds of, you know, just private parties that we would hold, all of that was there, and it is all gone. Once the USTA decided that they were going to allow us to have league play again, I was one of the first people, or one of the first captains, actually, that captained the 3-0 team back for Vacaville, and I worked with Tony and the Parks and Rec Department, and they were gracious enough to let us play at Centennial, and we were the first USTA teams to play there again post-pandemic, and we appreciated it so much. I found myself apologizing to the captains from the other teams that came because we knew it wasn't the same, but our fledgling little SCTA is trying, and with your help, we're trying, and we will eventually have back what we had before. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sickler.
She says fledgling, we're here with the stick.
Good evening, sir, how are you?
Good evening, council members and staff. I really appreciate this opportunity to share some of my life. I'm Ken Wildung, I'm the vice president of the SCTA. We've lived in the English Hills of Vacaville since 1992. My family and I, my wife, we're all active tennis players or supporters, along with our 14 grandkids, aging ranging from seven to 21. Many of them are supporters or actively involved in tennis in their high school and school years, looking for scholarships. It's amazing. I am 70...
We no longer had access for any kind of USTA competition. I will tell you, I'm emotional, I cried several times during the course of that year, knowing that I had lost it all over again for the second time, and would it ever come back? We had ice machines, we had waters, water machines, we had bathrooms, we had a room to host tennis gatherings after matches, all kinds of, you know, just private parties that we would hold, all of that was there, and it is all gone. Once the USTA decided that they were going to allow us to have league play again, I was one of the first people, or one of the first captains, actually, that captained the 3-0 team back for Vacaville. And I worked with Tony and the Parks and Rec Department, and they were gracious enough to let us play at Centennial, and we were the first USTA teams to play there again post-pandemic, and we appreciated it so much. I found myself apologizing to the captains from the other teams that came because we knew it wasn't the same, but our fledgling little SCTA is trying, and with your help, we're trying, and we will eventually have back what we had before. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sickler.
She says fledgling, we're here with the stick.
Good evening, sir, how are you?
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. I really appreciate this opportunity to share some of my life. I'm Ken Wildung, I'm the vice president of the SCTA. We've lived in the English Hills of Vacaville since 1992. My family and I, my wife, we're all active tennis players or supporters, along with our 14 grandkids, aging, ranging from seven to 21. Many of them are supporters or actively involved in tennis in their high school and school years, looking for scholarships. It's amazing. I am 77 years old, okay? Tennis has been wonderful. We put a court in at our house in 2004 to be able to support our family and bring tennis into their lives, to help develop, to help them be good sportsmans to, for exercise, for emotional support, like, like we've heard tonight. Tony and several of the members you see here have put together Indian Wells teams. We've gone down there. For six years, we put together teams here, and we went down and we played senior cups, okay? Of those six, three of them were finalists. One of them, we actually won, the 65-year-plus, all of people from back east, from Florida, from Alaska, it was a national tournament, okay? That's what we've done. And we've done that through the use of the facilities and being able to bring people in to the clubs that no longer support us. We need more courts. We need Centennial to be a premier tennis association that we can have not only support for families like mine in growth and hire our, our pros, but also for league play, like you've just heard. It's so important to have good competition, to be able to develop teams, to go together and make this a reality. So we are asking you guys, okay, to support SCTA, what this young man here has really spent his life in the last year and a half putting together, and we have a lot of good support. We want to partnership with you guys, we want a partnership with the city, and we want to bring tennis back strong and competitive for our adults, for our pros, for our children and their grandchildren. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, hello?
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. My name is Fidel Chavez, I'm a field representative with the NorCal Carpenters Union. I'm also here in support for the Next Era project, energy project with Corby. So, the one thing, the one thing I want to ask you is just give the opportunity for Next Era to show you that this energy project fits the city of Vacaville, right? We're, we're talking about renewable energy. This, this project is going to do that, but at the same time bring new resources to the city of Vacaville and opportunities for the workers to work on those projects. So, given the opportunity, put it on the agenda, we ask you politely to do so, and let, let them show you that it's a fit for the city of Vacaville, and I appreciate it, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez.
Good evening. My name is Mary Johnson, and I'm not the tennis mom. I wanted to speak with you this evening about the meaning of tennis and the opportunities that come from it. It is a lifelong sport, which you can tell by looking at me. I have been playing this game for 77 years. I wanted to tell you about how tennis opens doors. Looking back, I could see that if you have a tennis court, people will come, not just baseball, but tennis. There was one dirt court in my hometown. So I went from a dirt court to clay to grass to indoor courts and finally hard courts. The courts were in 24 states and two foreign countries. They were at the US Open, where I played, and at the White House, which was really rather interesting. Along the way, I met Jack Benny, Peter Lawford, I played with Billie Jean King, and against Bobby Riggs, if you saw that on TV. The US Olympic Committee named me Volunteer Coach of the Year for the whole full country in 2003. Awards like that tell you it's almost over. It's okay to die now because you're about done. So with those 77 years as a player and 53 years as a teaching pro behind me, I'm bionic, but I can still see and I can still yell. All this has taught me that the public tennis courts here make it possible for other people to have doors open as they did for me. So I thank you for your support of this game that does just that, plus enriches so many lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Council. Hey, how are you?
As you can see, I dress for the occasion. I, I, these people are wonderful people, and they've, they've put their heart and soul into putting a tennis program together. And I think some of the things that we wonder is, who made the decision to pretty much abscond with one tennis court when you could have put four pickleball courts on one court? You could have had eight for two, and we could have had two tennis courts. And I think there's a lack of planning on, on these issues. Somebody says, let's do it, and there's no pre-planning. We have a, a huge tennis contingency, and what do we do? I mean, anybody that drove past those courts could have seen those courts were being utilized during the pandemic, and it actually grew our community. Now, the other question I have, other than not having any kind of common sense about utilization of space, was you have a high school court that we all pay taxes for, we're not getting our tax dollars into these courts. We all pay this money, and yet those high school courts are totally shut down. Why? Because some vandals might choose to utilize them. Why not make those tennis courts at the high school a money-making concern? Why not put a Vacaville tennis co-op out there? You, you don't even have to put bathrooms out there, we could rent them for maybe $240 a month. We'd have a handicap, plus a male and female. You guys are wasting taxpayers' money by not utilizing those courts you have. We have Aaron over here who has put together this incredible program, and yet those high school courts are never utilized. We could put them like Napa Valley Tennis Association, they have a beautiful facility, and they use the high school courts. You're not seeing what you have. You're, these are short-sighted deliberations that say, okay, somebody wanted to play pickleball, let's put those pickleball one court on a tennis court. That was short-sighted. You guys get paid from our tax, tax dollars.
But really quickly, I don't usually respond back to the, the school comment. The city has no purview over the school district courts at all. 100%, we have no control, no ability, you've got to go to the school board. So I understand the concept, it's a great idea, but the city has nothing to do with the school board.
Well, what about Centennial? We could put a nice little facility out there, get a tough shed. We could have a couple of portable toilets.
Totally understood. Staff are taking notes down tonight, they're going to contact your group, but thank you very much for the comments tonight, I appreciate it.
Hello?
Hello. Good evening, councilmembers. My name's Darryl Lee, and I've been involved in tennis as a competitive player and a coach for, actually, more than four decades, and including half that time as the former UC Davis Edmonds coach. I've known Tony and Aaron very well for about half a year, and I have never known anyone in their positions who has more genuine passion for tennis and their community, and I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public comment for items not on the agenda? Come, come on up. Welcome.
Some familiar faces behind me and a few in front of me as well. My name is Aaron King, and I'll try and keep this short. I've had the privilege of serving the Vacaville tennis community for just shy of a decade at this point, and upon arrival, this meant directing a nine-court facility at a private establishment, and it was that way for quite some time, about seven years. And naturally, this was a home away from home. I was there from sunrise till sunset, and a lot of folks shared that, that journey with me. As I'm sure Tony and others alluded to earlier, March 2020 changed that for all of us. And it's not just tennis, of course, that is a drop in the bucket compared to the world scale, but it affected our world, right? Our microcosm here in this, in this town. And so, there's already been some mention, but I'll just say for those that don't know, this town is home to junior and adult, local, state, regional, district, national champions currently, at this point. With those nine courts being removed from our natural place circumstance, we had to find solutions very quickly. We found a partner in the city of Vacaville. It has not been the easiest transition because we went from a nine-court facility to a four-court scenario and trying to make that work. So I could puff out my chest and tell you that all my classes have been waitlisted since we started, but we kind of expected that. We knew we were downsizing to an extent. So the reason I bring it up is we served 204 players in the first five weeks of our summer program. We're currently serving 226 in our second five-week program, and when we looked at our data, we're adding about 13 players per new session that we run. We run nine sessions a year, so some quick math will tell you that's just over 100 players a year. We are going to run into a court issue. So I'm not here to toot my own horn, this is really just a call to action for those that can take some, right? Let's see here. Again, I said I'd keep it, I'd keep it short, I was moved by the, the scene behind me, so forgive me. We have a unique opportunity to shine a light on a successful and vibrant community on and off the court. I believe we have a responsibility to reciprocate their passion by offering the highest level of programming possible, and we can only do this working together. This is new for all of us. It used to bring an issue to me, and then have me bring it to a manager, and now there are a lot more steps that I'm aligned with the city instead of just a private entity. So bear with us as we get used to navigating these waters. I believe our goals are aligned. Do good, serve our residents, and leave whatever we impact better than we found it. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing all this. Hopefully, I'm the last. I'm here in a very unique position of having to defend the city of Vacaville. We did nothing wrong. I want to explain what happened and why we're in this position. About 40 years ago, three of us built the Browns Valley Racket Club. Beautiful facility, took off, was so popular, we then built Rancho Solano with Phil Sello and his group. You with me? We never in our wildest imagination thought there'd be a company called In Shape that had come in and buy all these clubs. Now, In Shape was backed by Bechtel Steel, that's where they got their money, that's why what they bought made no sense. But they hated racket sports. So it wasn't In Shape that was promoting the league. Prior to them taking over, we had a very powerful tennis community. In Shape comes in, they allocate everything to Drysdale, an outside agency to run the tennis, they didn't like it, and it went bankrupt. The new owners came in, and Tony and I have spent the last year trying to convince them to open, they have 27 tennis courts. They are closing down to all league play. That dumps everything onto Fairfield and Vacaville. It isn't, you didn't create the problem, I was on the planning commission about 100 years ago. We forced tennis courts into each park, people said, why'd you do that? Nobody's using them. Well, guess what? We have to have them now. And the solution falls to you, and out in Centennial Park is a beautiful facility. We need lights. You say, well, great, who's going to pay for the lights? You have about $40 million in unsecured, unallocated Measure M money. This is, we're only talking, it's a tiny portion of that would put lights out in Centennial Park. We could use bathrooms. You have to fill the void that was created through no fault of your own. I want to make sure everyone understands that it has nothing to do with the schools, it has nothing to do with decisions we made in the past, but the problem falls to you. And at one point, out of Vacaville alone, we had 20 teams playing all the time. And out of, it's the same people playing out of Rancho and out of Dover, the same group, there's about 300 to 400 of us, and it's an opportunity. And by the way, I play pickleball as well, so there's no reason to ever rip up a tennis court, ever. You could put pickleball lines on it, even I can tell a black line from a white line. It's a very easy mix, so we're not saying anti-pickleball. North Orchard's a lot of pickleball players, even got Buck and Alamo, you got people lined up, but whoever your facilities manager is has to be wondering, why is my phone ringing off the hook? For 20 years, everything was fine. And with COVID, it had to do with In Shape making a corporate decision, no league play, and they don't want to support racket sports, which puts all the onus on you folks. Good luck, we're here to help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quire. All right. Public comment for items not on the agenda? Anybody else? Going once, going twice, sold? All right. Thank you very much for coming out and sharing your feedback with us tonight, we appreciate it. We're going to move to public hearings, which we have none, correct city manager?
Correct.
All right, we are moving to business, normal business. Resolution 9A, resolution approving a disposition, development, and loan agreement between the city of Vacaville and Solano-Napa Habitat for Humanity for the development of affordable homeownership housing on city-owned property on Scoggins Court and East Monovista Avenue. Am I supposed to read that?
No, you took my job, but that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But we'll turn it over to Emily.
I'm looking to take, sorry.
And she'll give you a brief presentation. Thank you.
What he said. Good evening. Thank you very much for having me this evening. Happy to present this item. As Councilmember Sullivan introduced, we are looking for your approval of a disposition, development, and loan agreement with Habitat for Humanity for an affordable homeownership project. All right. So in September of 2020, the city council approved a negotiating agreement with Habitat that allowed staff to negotiate for this development, that's before you this evening. It's regarding- All right, so in September of 2020, the city council approved a negotiating agreement with Habitat that allowed staff to negotiate for this development. That's before you this evening. It's regarding the development of seven city-owned properties that are on Scoggins Court. One more button. Okay, there we go. So there's seven properties on Scoggins and East Monovista that are the topic of this development tonight. Negotiations included number of units, affordability levels, any requests of the city for financial or other assistance, et cetera. Before we were able to finalize those negotiations, the negotiating agreement period ended. So with that, a surplus land act requirement came into place and guidelines were issued after the end of period. And we did have to comply with the surplus land act in order to dispose of those properties. So back in May, the city council adopted a resolution that declared the seven properties as exempt surplus land. And that was allowable because it is intended for affordable housing. And you also approved staff to initiate a competitive bid process for that development, which was also a requirement of the surplus land act. So staff went ahead. We initiated that process. Again, surplus land act required that we notify the State Department of Housing and Community Development, local public agencies here in Vacaville, and a list of about 850 developers who are interested in knowing when surplus land is up for sale. At the end of the application period, we received one application, and that was from Habitat for Humanity. Just real quick, a little bit about Habitat. They are an affiliate of the International Habitat Group. And they envision a world where everybody has a decent place to live. And the local Habitat has completed more than 50 projects, four of which are here in Vacaville. And they are able to keep the costs of homeownership lower by working with cities, by the homeowners contributing sweat equity, and using volunteers during the construction process. So staff reviewed their application. It was responsive to the bid request. It fully supports their ability to complete this project. So staff finalize negotiations and have a tentative agreement before you. So the project would include nine parcels with 14 residential units, eight attached homes, five to include an accessory dwelling unit, plus one detached single-family home, five three-bedrooms, four bedrooms, two parking spaces for each home, and plus 11 guest spaces. All of these homes would be sold to households who are earning at or below 80% of the area median income. And your staff report gives you an idea of what that income level is by household size. In accordance with the surplus land act, the sales price would be restricted to below 20% of the median sales price for the neighborhood. And per the affordable housing law, it can't, can also not be more than having a monthly housing cost for the family of 30% of 70% of AMI. And again, in your staff report, we did the calculation to show you an example of what that means. So as Habitat sells their homes, they will need to do that comparison, see which one is less, and comply with that for those two laws that apply. As far as the city contribution, the request is for a $300,000 loan, 0% interest that would be forgivable as building permits are pulled for each of the nine parcels, and also to transfer the city-owned properties for $1. Few findings needed to be made to sell the property. The city can dispose of property for the common benefit, such as an affordable housing project. The city can sell property for less than the fair market value for affordable housing. And this action tonight, if approved, does not require environmental decision. The project would go through the formal entitlement process by submitting an application to our planning division. And through that process, the appropriate California Environmental Quality Act, as well as any National Environmental Protection Act, actions that would need to be taken would be done during that time. So again, the amount requested is $300,000. It's requested that if approved, that amount would come from American Rescue Plan Act funds. The council previously approved $1 million of ARPA funds to be used towards affordable housing. And it is recommended that the $300,000 be taken from that allocation for this project. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, take any comments. We also have three representatives from Habitat for Humanity who can answer any questions you have. Thank you.
City council members, my name is Robert McCollough. I'm here on behalf of the Solano-Napa affiliate of Habitat for Humanity. With me is our executive director, Andrew Kyleen, our project manager, Mark Bayless, and the chairman of our board of directors, Jack Bachelor. We appreciate the amount of time that housing and redevelopment and legal staff has put into this document that is in front of you today. And assuming that it is approved, then the amount of time that planning and other project review committee staff has worked with this and putting together what we think is a pretty good site plan. As we go forward with the entitlement process, we'll work out things like architectural details, understanding the specialty along Monovista. That's one of the busiest streets in the city, and there's quite a bit of visibility to that. We'll be working on balancing how we make these units affordable, but also making sure they're good residents and good neighbors to have. We'd be happy to answer any questions you have, but we think that it's a good DDLA in front of you now, but we'll be able to work out a good land use application. Because it involves a parcel map, we'll eventually see you again as that parcel map moves forward. But at this point, I'd rather with the staff that's here and I answer questions you may have about the DDLA or what we anticipate with the project. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions that I can answer for you? Thank you, chairman.
So I'm closing public comment and I'm opening council comments. Councilmember Silva, did you have a comment?
You know, I was really excited to, when I first learned about the interest of this project, really excited that it's finally come to us for a decision, hoping to have council support for it. I think one of the key things for that neighborhood in particular was more options for homeownership, rather than continuing to concentrate more and more rental units. I think this, the ability to create a sense of pride and ownership and a sense of community in this area is something that will only further continue to benefit the area, particularly as with unanimous support from council to initiate some plans or investment into creating a neighborhood association and hopefully eventually a neighborhood plan. With that said, the only request I have is within that neighborhood plan, and you mentioned about visibility, something that I brought up in private, a private discussion in the past, was to create a particular color scheme. I'm not so particular about, or picky about the architecture component, although it could be. But if we can create a color scheme, a diverse color scheme, and diverse mean, not meaning necessarily like bright purple, bright orange, but a color scheme that is colorful and characteristic and culturally relevant, I would appreciate, I would deeply appreciate if we can find a way to accommodate that as we, assuming we move forward, as we move forward.
We'll make sure that we work with our architect. I'm looking at how we can come up with an effective color scheme to work with the architecture and with the neighborhood. That's a relatively straightforward thing to do.
Future of the neighborhood. A couple other points, so thank you for that. A couple other questions actually for the city. At what point do we notify residents or have we notified residents of these plans?
Yeah, so when the formal application is submitted, then it does go through that community outreach process. I don't have the exact timing. It will depend when the application is submitted.
And then just who would be eligible to apply for one of these rare 14 opportunities?
We have a very broad outreach program that we do through the faith community, through all the outreach that Habitat has for years and years, and helping get families from the entire community first aware of the opportunity. And then as they come forward, there's actually a very detailed selection process that we have, including making sure that they go through training on how to maintain the units that they would be living in and owning, and some budgeting and other financial responsibility. If Andrew would like to talk a little bit further about our selection, I'll bring our executive director up, who talks a little bit more about our family selection project.
Councilmember Silva, thanks for your questions. We have discussed this project before. To your question about who would be eligible, geographically, we'd probably isolate this to residents of Solano County. So our intent would be to serve low-income residents of Solano County. And I'd just like to add to something that Ms. Cantu mentioned earlier about one of the requirements being low-income households that earn less than, no more than 80% of the area median income. We do make it possible for those low-income families actually to afford the house. So if it's necessary, because folks have seen the cost perhaps of building a house or selling it, we will subsidize that purchase so that a qualified low-income family can afford the house. And I should mention, because Bob asked me to, two, three, three criteria that we're looking for, a family that currently has need. Secondly, that they're willing to partner with Habitat because we're going to require sweat equity, $500 of sweat equity to build their house. And the third criteria is that they're actually able to afford it too, which is something we alluded to. The part of the selection process is to identify families that look like they're going to be able to meet the requirements of a 30-year fixed at 0% mortgage to pay off that that house.
I will say, I know a couple of the folks on Rocky Hill where Habitat for Humanity did some work in the past, and they continue to be very grateful for the opportunity. So just thank you.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. My question was more so, I think, kind of answered. How can we make sure that Vacaville residents get first crack at these, at this wonderful opportunity? I heard you say the county. How can we make sure that this goes to our residents or the families of our residents?
You, you could make it a requirement, first of all, that it be exclusively Vacaville. I can say historically, when we've had that restrictive of a constraint, we oftentimes can't meet it. You know, we have had developments before when, when a city made a date, it has to be a current resident of this city will do the outreach, and we can't find a qualified family. So historically, what's been most successful is restricting it to the county. If you'd like to make, you know, first option go to residents of Vacaville, that's something we would abide by, of course. But I wouldn't, I think you'd want to make it a little bit more loose than that. Perhaps first option go to Vacaville residents. Second would be wider. Yeah, so that we wouldn't, we, you know, it's a process that takes quite some time, probably four or five months to select families, to go through the selection process. We would not have to go through that again if the first wave didn't come up. So, so I think that the outreach could say there's much searching for low-income residents of Solano County with first priority going to residents of Vacaville. Think that would be workable.
A couple of questions myself. So let me see if I can turn this mic off here. Very similar question to Councilmember Stockton. So the city would be putting in 300,000 of their Vacaville's ARPA, right? And so again, that going to Blair residents or Dixon residents or whatever, that gives me a little heartburn, although I want to help everybody, but we've got our issues here in town. So I do have a pretty strong preference for Vacaville first, or maybe a first pass of Vacaville, and you loop Vacaville staff to kind of see what's what. I know one of the big topics that my peer, Councilmember Silva, talks about is just really the dream of homeownership in his district and just the massive proliferation of rentals and, and no opportunity to buy homes there. And so I think there's lots of families that would be very interested in the American dream that are, quite frankly, looking up at that hill from the apartments down below that, so I'd really like to see Vacaville first, pretty strongly, at least a portion of that at least, especially if the city's going to chip in, you know, hundreds of thousands of our ARPA. Not trying to make it difficult because I love what you guys do. It's amazing. It's wonderful. But every city sort of has to kind of protect their own and kind of do, you know, do their part in their city first. And so I do have a strong preference there as well. The question I had, and this is kind of a silly question, but an interesting question. We've kind of come into this quite a few times recently with other low-income housing projects. When the city makes a large contribution, it typically triggers prevailing wage. So with your volunteer labor kind of piece, and I'm not saying I want that to happen, I'm just saying, how does that not happen in this instance when the city is making a sizable tax dollar contribution to the project?
I happen to have our project manager, Mark Bydis, here, and I'll invite Mark up. But as he's coming up, I can say that I believe there's an exemption generally, and perhaps that would be on the city to decide. But in many instances, the, the opportunity for us to use volunteer labor is a big part of what makes the project pencil. And, you know, I should say too, I should have said this at the beginning of my pitch here, that we're very thankful for the opportunity, potentially gaining 300,000 in ARPA funds, because that's a significant kickstart to what it is that we're trying to do. Mark, if you want to come up and speak about the prevailing wage.
I think actually more my comment, Mark, and I'd love to hear, but I think more my comment, I just don't want to surprise torpedo six months down the road for the project. So as long as, Mark, you and Emily kind of touch base, I just, we've had a couple of projects where that comes up all of a sudden and the project no longer pencils. I'm sure you've done this a million times, but it just kind of puffed my brain when, when you guys were talking about it. So as long as you and Emily can connect offline and just make sure that's not going to be a surprise later. Oh, come to the mic so they can hear you. You can come, yeah, come to the mics, they can hear you at home, sorry.
I can tell you that I'm very pro-union. We do build with volunteers, the majority. And the contractors that we use currently are mostly union contractors, North Bay Plumbing. And then if there are, there are certain areas, street work and those types of areas that do require us to use union labor, and in those cases, we do. Once we're on the private side or on where we're actually building the homes, we are exempt. It's basically because we use volunteers to build everything. So that's it. And then the things that we do sub out are generally union work.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I don't think I had any other questions. I just wanted to thank the four of you for coming out tonight. The work you do is absolutely amazing. You know, Commissioner McCollum, it's, it's good to see you back again and in service in a, in a different setting. And just thank you so much for presenting tonight. I think we're probably ready for a motion team or anyone have other questions or thoughts?
Motion that we approve with the conditions that we discussed regarding the priority for homes going to Vacaville residents or residents' families.
Got a motion in a second? On the topic, any questions? Councilmember Silva?
The key word there is priority.
Okay. So motion second, all in favor? Aye? Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. You did a fantastic job there. So the next item before you is a resolution approving Tower Park modifications, master plan, and allocation of additional funds. We have Melody Ocampo making a presentation tonight.
There we go. Good evening. Give me just a brief moment as I pull up our presentation. Here we go. All right, we're back here again to talk about Tower Park. Just a little background, you see her before. I think you all are familiar. We were here at the end of May of this year, not too long ago, brought forth to you a master plan with some adult, and we took comments for some requested revisions to that master plan. So we're back here tonight asking for an augmentation to the allocation of measure and funding for this project in the amount of $700,000 to bring the total project budget to 2.5 million to fund those amenities and enhancements that were discussed. So here's the master plan that you saw in your presentation, or sorry, in your staff report. So just kind of going over some brief highlights here. We have made some changes. I'm going to get into some details of some, but I'll just cover briefly some of the other ones that aren't in more detail later on in my presentation. So here, we've continued to include the Pollinator Garden. We've also added some additional here along the side of Markham Avenue. We've also brought it into the entryway. We really wanted to We really wanted to touch on the request for the enhanced theme of the park, the culture and nature vibrant colors and bringing those amenities in. These little asterisks that you see here, the number seven throughout the park, these are sculptures, potential sculptures, art projects, things that could be community-designed. Again, bringing in those vibrant colors, bringing in some cultural amenities. We know that there's a big love of butterflies and pollinator gardens, bringing that in potentially to the park through some different artwork, public art that we can incorporate, not only through the different sculptures, but also through seat walls, tiled seat walls that can be designed. This is an example here, and I'll zoom in a little bit, of one that was done, doesn't allow me to zoom too much, we have this a little later on, of a park that did an entire park, really focused on the culture of the community, and that's an opportunity that we see here as well. So we did explore some of the other comments about bringing in zip lines and more play features, merry-go-round swings, hillside slide, I'm going to get into some of those. One thing I do want to note while we're on this larger image is that we did explore looking into making some flat turf area in other areas, that was a request. However, it was, it is recommended that we keep it in this area, simply because it's a bit cost prohibitive, would create some retaining walls in this area that maybe wouldn't be ideal, some potential safety concerns and access issues that we just felt like this is such a nice location, and we also really wanted to play into that hillside for the requested zip line. We did hear the request and potential option to eliminate the skate park. Instead, we've kind of chosen to do some reduction and make it so that this is kind of a, an area that we can bring in some safety elements in terms of having a flat wall of sorts here that we can also bring in some artwork into. But I'll get into that a little bit more later. I just wanted to notice it because that was something that the youth really captured, the park users. Moving on, the entrance here, again, an opportunity for sculpture and art, bringing in these pollinator garden also to the forefront, bringing in these seat walls that you see here, these black lines that would include some tile art, similar to what you see here. These are just examples from other parks. And then also bringing in some really cool stamped concrete, bringing in that nature and culture into the actual pathway here. These are just some of the ways that we thought we could enhance this park and bring in that requested theme. Moving on to the interactive water feature area. So as you can see here, there's a really colorful surface. This is, again, these are all examples, so play elements where kids can run through, be greeted by butterflies, leaves, different elements of nature as they're splashing through and getting water on them, keeping them cool in those hot summer Vacaville days as we're experiencing now. And then moving on into more of our nature play area. So again, bringing in that requested zip line, utilizing the hillside, that would lead children into this kind of landing area, which would then take them to some more natural play structures, maybe some climbing walls, whether that's logs, something that kind of has a traditional playground feel, but still is bringing in that nature and having that sense of really being in the outdoors. And then also up here, you'll notice a hillside slide. This is something that, again, would take advantage of the natural grade of the park and also has some boulders here that can be used for climbing and kind of pay homage to the nearby Caligari open space, which has boulders that attract folks from the Bay Area and the greater Sacramento area. Moving on to where we have some of our existing playground equipment, that would stay in place, but there would, it would be enhanced by some kind of mystical nature and animal-themed sculptures and play elements that kids could really get into imaginative play, bringing in and replacing those old spring riding animals with some new ones. Again, these are all just some examples. What I'm really excited about, there would be an inclusive merry-go-round, an inclusive swing, and then some additional swings. Currently, there's two. This would bring in two additional for four total traditional swings, and then that fifth swing would be an inclusive one. And then kind of honing in on the skate area, as I mentioned earlier, this is kind of a flat wall here, skaters could come in, slide on this seat wall, come around here, slide on these rails, come up this little ramp here, kind of make a little circuit here, if you will, coming through this area. There's a small barricade here, and then, as you can see, this basketball footsole area is something that we can really enhance with colors and community-designed art, and that can be something that is different. And as you can see, there's different examples here in the skate area versus the basketball footsole, but it could be something that really flows into each other as well. And then just bringing it back together, here's kind of that whole picture again. I just wanted to kind of bring it in and then go on to, before we get into some questions and such, I wanted to just share about some exploration that staff did in terms of looking into a potential consultant for soliciting donations and community volunteers. We did do some preliminary research. Most of what we found is that at a project of this scale, it's pretty negligible in terms of what you would spend on a consultant versus what you would gain in terms of volunteer time, cost savings, as well as donations. However, we've identified some great opportunities where we could maybe cut some minimal costs with donations for public art or bringing in the community to really be involved in this park, in the public art, in the tile seating walls, in painting on the skate area, the basketball footsole court, and then in the pollinator garden, both planting and tending, that's, there are projects right now that are coming to Parks and Recreation for bringing in pollinator, pollinator plants to the community. I do want to note that this project includes from, the project budget includes kind of from this point down, the sculptures, as Councilmember Silva mentioned, we're hoping would be, have some district dollar funding. And that is kind of the gist of where we're going, but I would be remiss if I didn't point that out. I will now open it up for questions and, of course, go back to any slides, I'm sure you'll want to see many.
Okay, thank you very much. That was an excellent presentation. I will open it up to the public. Is there any member of the public who wants to comment on this presentation? I'm closing public comment. Councilmember Silva?
I think it's pretty dope. I'm really excited about the opportunity and kind of showed it off to a few folks. You know, I've been out of town for a while, and they were, they were just generally, generally excited about the possibilities. And so, like even when you're explaining, I'm getting a little teary-eyed, so I gotta make sure.
Do you need a tissue?
Not yet, not yet. But thank you for offering. So, yeah, I think, you know, I appreciate responding. I know it's, you know, a price tag, but I think, you know, it's, you know, I've heard a lot of folks, including on this council, you know, talk about how we can, you know, best support the area. You got a large group of folks, actually, some folks still here in the crowd, you know, committed their careers towards serving a lot of kids, not just in this area, but a lot of kids that are represented from families in this area. The other folks that spoke earlier about tennis shows, you know, how important recreational spaces to the development of people of all ages and how, and, you know, I think that's something that's been really echoed these past, more and more these past several years, whether it be through social media or private conversations, on how we continue to support a department that's really struggled with giving the resources to kind of do something that's really different for Vacaville from what I'm seeing here. So, and I think we're well on our way to building Disneyland, Aaron, possibly. So if you guys, that's an inside comment. So just a couple of things, just want to make sure that, so in this prize, art would not be included, but the structures, the structural support, I guess, to incorporate that would be something that possibly would be included or?
When you say the structural support, the only thing that is not included?
Like you mentioned the walls.
The tile art walls, the only thing would just be the, this number seven, these asterisks here, the sculptures that you see similar to this, but all the tile walls, the paintings, and the various different elements that we can put that in, the surface here, that would all be included, and the stamping on the concrete, that's included. It is simply just these here, and they can really, I mean, it's art, right? It can vary. It can be $10,000, it can be $100,000 and beyond. So that's really something that is subjective, and, you know, we talk a lot about bringing in local artists and what does that look like and what is that price tag? So that's a to-be-determined.
Okay. And then, so in there, another thing, you know, there's different events that are held by, you know, different churches there, different community organizations, city. So like access to electrical is something that's always kind of been needed. I don't want to hold this up for that, but if there's an opportunity to kind of fit in some type of electrical access or even lighting that can, fluorescent lighting, so this is something I came across in my travels, fluorescent lighting that just allows for more vibrancy, particularly of the different structures. And I'm not talking about big spotlights, just something that's simple, that just highlights a sign or just something that keeps the area, I mean, it's already kind of relatively lit, in my opinion, right now, but something that's, when people pass by, it's just something that stands out, and there's a, you know, an even more enchanting component to it all. Because this area is used late in hours, so, thank you.
Absolutely. And that was, we can look into both of those. One of the things I'll just note is all these number 10s you see here, that is a solar lighting, six-inch ballard, and a bench. That's been part of this plan for quite a while. So increased lighting is definitely in here.
Councilmember Stockton?
My question, beautiful park, by the way. I love all of the amenities. Is there a way, do you have a slide or some sort of information that has an itemized list of the amenities and how much they cost? I'm definitely interested in seeing if we can add some of these amenities to our other parks as well, but this is absolutely stunning and gorgeous, so thank you for the hard work that you put into designing it. Do you have that information by chance?
We can definitely get that to you.
Okay, please do.
And I will share, I apologize, I was moving through this quickly, I have to, I realized I did not highlight one item that I should have, and that is, at our entrance here, this kiosk, a Rocky Hill Trail kiosk, this would go right in this area here and would actually bring and kind of connect and show that connectivity from this park to Rocky Hill Trail to the new Brown Street Park and to Centennial Park. So I was simply remiss and getting excited about everything else in the artwork, just thought I would share that while I had the opportunity.
A couple, a couple of quick comments, and I'll be, I'll be brief. A+, stellar job. I know we gave you kind of a hard time on this project and the community had lots of thoughts and ideas. I'm just, I'm really proud of the work the city did. I think you really stretched and hit a home run on this one. I'm super impressed. I think, you know, this is our first really major park redevelopment project that we've done in Vacaville, and I just think that you're setting the bar super high, off to a great start. Taking notes for Sierra Vista, where Sierra Vista's coming next, but just, Sierra Vista's, you know, Centennial's coming, but just really, really stellar job. I did want to, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Commissioner Vasquez tonight as well from Parks and Rec. You have been a huge champion of this project and citizen voice and driving some of these changes through, so thank you for your service on the commission. And just a huge thank you to staff, you guys really just did a tremendous job. I don't have any other comments other than I'm, I'm wowed, A+, you guys did really, really well, and I'm turning it over to Councilmember Silva to potentially make a motion if you'd like to. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ritchie, I apologize, just saw your thing pop up.
My lack of talking is because I don't love the project. I lost my voice, so I tried to make my comments very, very short. This is amazing, this amazing park. I'll share my comments with Silva and the city manager of the past. I grew up going to this park as a kid. I live right up the hill on Busley Avenue for a long time, and, you know, all the parks are amazing in Vacaville. My mom still lives by Orchard Park, and it's very much utilized by the tennis crew. And, but this is something special. This park has been kind of overlooked for a long time, and I'm just excited to see this, this community park get a well-serve facelift. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. So good that you made Councilmember Ritchie speechless.
Thank you.
Why should I clap, sorry.
We are on item 9C, city manager.
Thank you, councilmember. This next item is a resolution authorizing myself to execute an agreement with SCI for an assessment of our Lightning and Landscape Districts. Brian McLean from our Public Works Department has a presentation for it.
Good evening, council. Some background real quick. Assessment districts, you know, what are they? They're financing mechanisms for the maintenance for maintenance. That's what they are. They're cogent areas, geographically located, and they're, they're mechanisms to allow the city to be able to levy and then get in there and perform the maintenance. The Lightning and Landscape Act of 1972 codified that, that particular financing mechanism. And again, it allows for the levying of the limited maintenance specific to certain assessment districts. So, for example, the, the assessment levy of one district is focused only on that specific district and the revenue that's generated from that levy. Levy funds can't be used from one district and utilized in another district. They're specific to this certain assessment district itself. Another big piece of information regarding assessment districts is that levy is capped at 3% annually of the Consumer Price Index, and that'll come in to more importance a little bit later. Vacaville has an inventory of 134 districts of various types, parks, open space, drainage, detention basins, street lighting, et cetera. All that said, we have challenges with our assessment districts. The current fiscal year, '22, '23, has 29 assessment districts that are in financial shortfall. We annually collect levy less than the cost to maintain that particular district. The financial shortfall gap is bridged by the city's general fund, and in this, this particular fiscal year, that came up to $1.3 million. If we don't come up with a solution to address these shortfalls, the general fund will end up subsidizing these particular shortfalls indefinitely. That low number of, or the reasons, some background on the reasons, because there are three primary reasons that really have driven the assessment districts into this shortfall situation. First off is a low number of dwelling units. Simply put, when the assessment district was formed, there just weren't enough properties associated with that particular assessment district. So there's just not enough properties hanging into it to pay for the maintenance of that particular assessment district. Other big factor was that 3% annual CPI cap. This is interesting. Going back to 1975, of the last 48 years, 31 of those years, CPI was reported higher than the allowed 3% at 65% of the time. So 65% of those years, for the last 48 years, CPI has been higher than 3%. What's that, what's that doing is, it's racing ahead, the cost of maintaining is moving further and further ahead of our ability to maintain based on that cap. The last big issue was related to the 2015 State Supreme Court San Juan Capistrano ruling. As it relates to the cost of irrigation water, in 2015, the California District, Fourth District Court of Appeals found that the city of San Juan Capistrano had their tier water rate structure was determined to be unconstitutional because it charged more for water than it cost the city to provide that service. Unfortunately, and ironically, those tiered rates were developed at the time when we had our last drought. Those rates were designed to help discourage water misuse. Fortunately, the State Supreme Court, the Fourth District Court ruling impacted about two-thirds of the water districts across California, including Vacaville's. And suddenly, the cost of water to irrigate our parks, the city's parks, as well as our assessment districts, went from about 42 cents per unit to $1.72 per unit, a significant cost that hit the assessment district. With that said, and those challenges mine, in June of 2022, Public Works developed an RFP and issued a city, to issue a citywide assessment district alternative funding study. In brief, as a synopsis, the project entails a two-phased approach with several built-in checkpoints that we will bring back to the city council, information and status updates, and direction, assuming that city council allows for the process to continue forward from phase to phase. In that first phase, we will conduct a comprehensive analysis of the districts and their improvements, property ownership, voter statistics, tax, tax base, et cetera, will be studied. A consultant will then perform a preliminary assessment engineering relative to the potentiality of performing either a Prop 218, property owner vote, for a city either a Prop two eighteen, property owner vote for a citywide assessment, or the potential for a special tax initiative, which would be going before the, all the registered voters of the city. With that preliminary assessment engineering completed, staffing consultant would then return to city council with those key findings and recommendations and seek direction from city council on moving to that next step, which would be a survey to determine actual public support of such an initiative. A survey conducted would be tabulated, returned to city council, and again, those findings and directions would be sought from city council as to whether to proceed to Phase Two. Phase Two would begin with an engineer's report and budget, which would be developed for the improvements and services to be funded by that new assessment district, whatever it is. Significant community outreach would begin, and finally, developing of the direction established by city council previously in regards to the balloting of the initiative, either through a Prop two eighteen process, a property owner vote process, or through a general election balloting process, which is that special tax initiative process. Again, those directions will be brought back, the recommendations and key findings of this information developed through the, the study would be brought to city council for your consideration and direction as to whether we move forward and how we move forward. Back to the bid, we received two bid packages, one from SCI Consulting and one from NBS. The bid packages were both reviewed for responsiveness, they both passed that particular test. A four-member evaluation committee was formed, and you can see on the slide there the various scoring criteria that were involved in the evaluation. The outcome of that evaluation was that SCI Consulting was ranked number one with three hundred and fifty-eight points and a total proposed cost of a hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred. SCI has got thirty-seven years of experience, twenty years with the city of Vacaville. They have a ninety percent success rate for passage of funding measures and a hundred and fifty-plus successful ballot measure process, objects. And it's for this reason that staff is recommending SCI for this assessment district feasibility study. Environmental, it's exempt from CEQA. And fiscal impact, a hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred dollars from the general fund. And a strategic goal is is number three, protect Vacaville's quality of life, and goal four A, ensure fiscal sustainability. And the recommendation, by simple motion, adopt the subject resolution. That concludes my presentation.
Comment? Any member of the public want to speak on this item? Okay, closing public comment. Counsel? Councilmember Stockton?
Thank you for the presentation. My question would be, what would be the greatest amount that one of the twenty-nine districts that are in shortfall? How high could that go up if it was adjusted?
Can you rephrase that?
So what I'm trying to figure out is, what percentage do these twenty-nine shortfall districts stand to have to pay if it was evened out amongst the city to, to bridge that shortfall?
Great question. That's really at the heart of this feasibility study, is to perform that engineering, which SCI, if, if council elects to move forward in this process, SCI would actually, that's part of their process, is to determine what those fiscal impacts would be, you know, what the, the scope of the assessment district is. Whether or not we go to a, a property owner Prop two eighteen process or through that special tax initiative, all those variables is, are built into this, this process, and that's part of SCI's scope of work.
Councilmember Silva?
Sorry, I was just looking over the attachment one, starting to sub. But, um, I'm going to answer that, so, one other clarification is maybe more for the public. You know, there's been a lot of comments about our, our on-ramps and off-ramps, the condition, the high weed, whatnot. This would not be included in that evaluation.
So staff, that's a great question. In my opinion, the way that we're going to move forward with it, that is a question that, that is going to be on the table, something that SCI is going to be asked to do. I think this is an opportunity to, this is the first opportunity, you know, that we've really had to evaluate the assessment districts and those various variables. Whether or not we move forward in that direction, that's something that SCI will be able to, to ponder, study and evaluate and bring back, along with staff, to provide to city council as to consideration as to move forward in that particular direction or not.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Ritchie, sorry.
Wait, close, um, so I think it's great. One part I really liked about was SCI was the part of, really the education, it would bring a ballot issue. I think really the education to the public is really, I think, my, my, the big thing that stuck out. I mean, we have to make sure that if we're going to straddle cities and other costs and the residents, they need to really understand the value of having aesthetically lit city, safety, and the benefits, the cost analysis, benefits of having a city that you can go from district to district, street to street, and you're proud of the way it looks, and from intersection to intersection. I really wish there was a way to take the Caltrans portion of the on-ramp, off-ramps and kind of take over that, because it, it's, it does look horrible. But there's a big value of making sure the city is well-lit for safety concerns and for pride ownership. You should be happy coming to the city, and we have just awesome-looking street lights, like all the trees landscaping is just done to the nines. We're trying to grow in the right direction, we need to make sure we look like the city we want to become. So I, I think really making sure the city buys in, and then feel like we just shoved another thing down and make sure that the outreach is really strong, where they get pictures and ideas of what the city could look like with, with a little bit of investment from the community.
Those are great comments, and built into this project is a very robust public outreach process to do exactly that. This is a big decision, you know, it's a, it's a moment for the city to really get our hands around this challenge, because if we don't, it's risked now, it will continue to burden the general fund, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Motion to approve?
I've got a motion to approve, do we have a second? Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Uh, we have item nine D, please, city manager.
Thank you, members of the council, this next item is another resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase agreement with Walker Telecom for our parking sensors project in downtown. Brian McLean, once again, from our Public Works Department has a presentation for you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And council, this, as the city manager said, this is for the purchase of wireless systems to monitor our downtown parking stalls. During the May tenth, twenty-twenty-two city council meeting, our community development director provided a presentation to city council related to the downtown-specific plan implementation and the initial projects list for council's consideration. A component of that presentation was this downtown parking stall project, parking sensor project. Council approved the project with a budget of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and at that point, Public Works picked up a baton and started to move forward with a request for proposals. That RFP was issued in early June of this year, and you can see the key system elements sought below on the slide. Real-time parking space availability information, you know, the wayfinding through a free smartphone app, scalable as the city continues to grow and provide those data analytics in real time that allow the city to be able to maximize the usage of its existing parking stalls. By the bid due date, a single bid package was received from Walker Telecom. Receiving a single bid patch, bid package, however, is not the end of the story, it doesn't kill the, the procurement process. However, with that said, Public Works being versed in federalized projects, projects that have federal funding in them, and RFPs of those natures. There are two specific tools that a federal process speaks to specifically related to a single bid being received. That first bid is a review of the RFP for overly restrictive specifications. And that's something that we initiated immediately after receiving the bid. The comparison that the city did was with our RFP and specs against a slew of other similar type of projects along, around Slaloon County and California. The bid document, as I said, were looked at for a restrictive nature of, of their process within the RFP. There was no brand, a model or part number that was listed, no specific color. It was very generic, contained very generic industry standard language for a parking stall system. With that said, and the restrictive process, that review was reviewed and the, determined that the bid documents that we had were very industry standard, and so it was moved forward, were for a review of responsiveness, which it was done, it, it was determined to be responsive, and then forwarded to the evaluation committee for review. A three-member evaluation committee independently scored and evaluated the bid document. The total score for any one committee member was a hundred and fifty maximum points. The average of the three members, the score came out to a hundred and thirty points, and that was the average. So the bid processed by all three members, it was scored very highly, this bid submitted by Walker Communication. Because we had budget constraints with the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the city requested a best and final offer from Walker Telecom, and Walker turned around and provided a BAFO price of three hundred and forty thousand dollars. This is where the second bit of that federal process comes in play, again, because we have a single bid. It's a price analysis. We look at the price offered and the scope of work that our project entails, and we compare it against relative projects of similar scope and size. Staff contacted Santa Clara County, as well as UC Davis Health, two sites that had recent projects of very similar scope. We discussed with them the, the entrails of their various ups and downs of their projects, the costs, et cetera. We found them to be very competitive with what Walker Telecom had offered the city of Vacaville. This is the scale of the project site, as you can see on the slide, these are the, the twelve parking lots located in the city's downtown, respectively, both on the north and the south side of Main Street for reference. Additional to the public parking lots, this is the street-level parking, where sensors would be installed on Main Street from Cernan down to McClellan, and a small jog on Dobbins and Merchant, as you can see from the slide there. Approximately eleven hundred sensors in total. Now, of a smaller scale, but of the same product, this is the city of Woodland. And we were notified that the Woodland Police Department, they have a sergeant there who was in charge of the deployment of a project similar to ours within their city. I had an opportunity to speak with that individual, they're still very happy with the product being offered by Walker Telecom. And you can see in the, the small red circles, those are actually the sensors that are located on their first street in front of their city hall, they're very small and unintrusive. Again, twelve parking stalls, on-street parking, about eleven hundred sensors. The wire, they're all wireless, requiring no trenching, rugged, withstand up to eight thousand pounds per load, securely affixed to the pavement. Terms of security, the sensors only record if a vehicle is parked over it or not. And even then, the encrypted information sent from the sensor back to the, up to the cloud and to the management dashboard essentially, is block cipher security, NSA level. Through a freely available smartphone device, users will be able to get their clear directions to available parking stalls across that project area. And the project will allow the city maximize the city's existing downtown parking spaces across Main Street, as well as those parking lots themselves. Terms of turnaround time from project initiation, approximately two to three months, depending on supply chain issues. Environmental, this project is exempt from CEQA. Fiscal impact, we have a budget of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that council granted on May tenth. The proposed project cost is three hundred and forty thousand dollars approximately. No additional funds for this project are necessary because the funding was allocated for the downtown-specific plan in last year's budget, and we will be utilizing those funds for this project. The strategic goal is goal number two, strengthen the local economy, and goal number three, check Vacaville's quality of life. Finally, the recommendation, by simple motion, adopt the subject resolution. That concludes my presentation.
I'm opening up for public comment, any questions from the public, comment from the public? Seeing none, I will close public comment, hand it over to council, council, any comments or questions? No, pretty straightforward. Oh, Councilmember Ritchie?
I'll be short. Make sure what I thought it would be. I think it's great, I originally brought to us, I was really excited about the opportunity of the pubs, and do you guys look in, in at all about the, to geo fencing? It's like, I, I use Lot Seven every, every day, and I, I pulled up actually on Monday and said, wow, there's a beautiful, brand-new sign of Lot Seven. But let's say someone's coming out of town, and they want to go to a downtown coffee, one of our amazing places on Main Street. Could they like, is there a way to geo-fencing, they can tell them the closest, most appropriate place to start the search? Try Lot Five, try Lot Seven first, and then they can go from there? So they're not frustrated because they're starting the fuzz lot first, and realize, wow, I passed by four lots I could have parked in, just get a darn coffee, and that kind of becomes a nuisance. Is there a way to kind of give them a first, a first, like, direct them to this lot first? And also, is there a way to give a small business community opportunity to, if someone's coming to town, they can get ideas of where they can go and suggestions? If you're coming to downtown, try these four places for coffee, or pizza, or, or the cafes. Is that something that could really help drive business to the downtown community?
Great question, so staff was very ears-open at the last council meeting, or the May tenth council meeting, when we initially staff brought this project. And yes, actually, this was one of the factors that we wrote into the scope of work, and the requirement was a geo-fencing type of system, so. And this product actually has that kind of component, so it can provide very much of the, you know, the application and demonstration that you just, you know, went through in terms of being able to notify the participant or the individual using the app when they hit a geo-fence area. So yes, it does have, have that capability.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, just real quick, so when they open this app, are they going to see the stores downtown that they're parking next to?
I'll have to look into that a little bit further, but, but I do know that.
Before they get there, clearly. I'm just curious.
So staff will be working, Public Works will be working with the community development. They're very, very much interested in this project as well, in terms of enhancing that partnership with the DVBID. So we're very much interested in ensuring that those type of functionalities are there. And if we can leverage what this product can do in, in terms of meeting those particular needs, we are certainly going to make sure that we get those employed.
I, one quick question, and you probably covered this, but what's the, what's the time span of the project in totality? It's two to three months to implement, but how long do we expect the system to last? I mean, it, do we have a light, estimated lifespan per se, or do we know that?
Longer than I'll be here.
Okay, all right, that's.
The, the, that's a great question. The, the batteries within each of the sensors are good for ten years.
Okay.
And, you know, part of the process is that we, within this procurement, we'll have some spares. And sustainability, as it relates to the batteries, was actually something that we asked, you know, the, the, in, in the bid process, we asked, you know, the various bidders, whoever was picking up the bid package. Those batteries are, are, are very much extended life. We shouldn't have a problem with them, and recycling, recycling of them, once they're dead, appears to be very normal within our standard battery recycling process that we have now with ecology.
And, and I assume there is some sort of software update, app update agreement as well, so that we purchase the system, and then all of a sudden, a year from now, they say, oh, by the way, you have to subscribe or something. Is that included in the tenure lifespan?
The, the app is included, and as well as all the updates, and it's a freely available app. It looks like, I've used it for a couple of the locations that we just mentioned in, in the presentation. It's very clean, it's very easy to use, I think the fundamental, hopefully, they'll continue to move along that track as time goes on, but it's, it's very simple to use, very much like the. goes on, but it's, it's very simple to use, very much like the Google Maps system that you, everybody's got on their phone. Where is a stall? And it's as simple as, you know, the green dot is an available stall, and it hits you right there, directs you right there.
City Manager Bush?
So I just wanted to add on and expand on that just a little bit, in terms of the philosophy of its use and everything. So, right now, parking is kind of a mystery down there, and there's a lot of different opinions about what the parking situation is in downtown. And this is intended to really give us a base, if you will, but also be more proactive in terms of installing a parking management program if we decide to go that route. I mean, in addition to, you know, just keeping track of data, what's available, what's not available, it also, should we go to, you know, time-enforced parking and be more proactive in that, it absolutely allows for that to happen in enforcement. So when you go to other communities and you see a proactive parking, you know, timed parking plan or anything like that to control traffic flow and things like that in parking times, this system allows us to do that very well and very easily also. So it's really just, you know, giving us the opportunity to track data, to help customers find parking, and then also show what's really happening down there, and then should we need to go further with that, it gives us that opportunity to do so.
Thank you, City Manager. Any further questions? I'll take a motion if council's ready.
I'm motioning to approve.
Councilmember Silver, a second from Councilmember Ritchie. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
We are moving to item...
Thank you, council. This next item is a proposed amendment, version 3.0, for the Council District Benefit Program. George Ann Mager Smith from our City Manager's office is here to make a presentation.
Good evening, council members. We're here tonight with a few more proposed amendments to the Council District Benefit Program guidelines for your consideration. A, very brief background, council approved the Council District Benefit Program, which we have lovingly nicknamed the District Dollar Program because it's easier to say. As part of the fiscal year 2122 budget, the program is funded through Measure M and allocates $50,000 annually to each district in the mayor's at-large seat, with the goal of providing an opportunity to improve and beautify neighborhood public spaces, provide long-term impacts to the community, to nurture a sense of community and pride, and improve community resiliency. And these goals would be achieved through public facility and park improvements, neighborhood improvements, community projects, programs, and services. We hadn't had a program like this before, so we did leave the guidelines initially quite broad to allow some flexibility and creativity as we kind of got into the process. For the purposes of the program guidelines, we are adding a few definitions. We've added a definition for project. As we're using that term as sort of a catch-all to include permanent or temporary property improvements, ceremonies, events, and town halls. At the June 28th meeting, council approved adding donations to organizations that provide a clear community benefit, and there were some suggestions on how to really kind of dial that in and make it Vacaville-based organizations. And so tonight, one of the things that we're adding is we're proposing to change that to clarify that donations to Vacaville nonprofits would be eligible, and we're also recommending that Vacaville nonprofits receiving donations would be able to demonstrate a reportable outcome from the use of the funds. This is a new component that we didn't mention last time, but it ensures that there isn't a conflict within, with the ineligible expense list, which includes things like indirect costs, ongoing operational costs, overhead business expenses. And this all, this change also would ensure that we're keeping with the intent of the program, which is to benefit the community through park, facility, and neighborhood improvements, and community projects or programs. So an update to the ineligible expenses, and we're proposing two updates here. The first is projects for the purpose of benefiting or acknowledging city personnel, and we're proposing to add this for clarity and because this suggestion has come up a few times. And the city does have programs in place already to appreciate and recognize staff, and we appreciate council support of those programs. And the second change is projects or donations that create a conflict of interest. And this one was discussed way back when we brought the program to you in October, but it wasn't part of the guidelines, so this is just, would really be to memorialize that as part of the official guidelines. Moving on to timelines, there was quite a bit of discussion last time about the proposed changes to this section, and I want to acknowledge the angst associated with the potential changes given the proximity to the upcoming election season, and there was no intention there other than to memorialize the guidelines that we presented when the program was originally approved, but we did miss an opportunity to kind of give you a heads-up on some of those changes. So I apologize for any surprises last time. But given all of that, we've taken your feedback and hope to, that the changes we're proposing now will address some of your concerns. So we wanted to define a few terms that are specific to the guidelines. First, the election cycle, we're defining that as the period from the close of the nomination period through the election in years where a council member is seeking reelection. And then ceremonial event, we're defining that as an event designed to celebrate a completed project or a completed project phase. An example would be a ribbon-cutting or an art unveiling. Now for the guideline changes, we aren't proposing any changes to number one, which is that projects must be completed within the fiscal year funds are allocated, or the next fiscal year if banked. Number two is new, and it says no ceremonial events are allowed during the election cycle. Number three is also new, no ceremonial events allowed if a council member is the subject of a qualified recall election. Number four, also new, projects that will start or complete during and the election cycle must receive council approval. The intent with these three is really to allow projects to continue if they started before an election cycle while staying away from ceremonial events, which could be considered campaigning. Number five is a rewrite of the guideline we proposed last time regarding lead time. The new language says that except in unusual circumstances, project proposals will be submitted at least 90 days in advance to allow for planning, permitting if required, and promotion. And staff really has a vested interest in helping your project succeed, and we do need that time to work through the details, whether it might be, you know, creating a marketing plan, or coordinating the installation of a piece of playground equipment with Public Works. Some of those things do take longer than they might seem to take. And we also know there could be some projects that don't require the 90 days, hence the revised language there. So I also just wanted to, as a reminder, remind you that last time you did approve a process for when projects or programs might fall outside the guidelines, or if they're a little blurry and we're not sure whether they fall in or out. And then should that occur, a council member can bring that project proposal to the council for approval. And with that, staff's recommendation is that by simple motion, you approve the recommended, the amended Council District Benefit Guidelines. But I'm sure you might have some questions or comments, and I'm happy to try and answer those.
I'm going to open it for public comment. Is there any public member that wants to comment on this item? Okay, closing public comment. Turn it over to council. Councilmembers, questions? Comments? Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, when you say you're going to, in those instances where you, it would be brought to council for approval, would it just be a simple majority?
I'm going to ask the city attorney, and if she's nodding, so yes.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Any questions? Motion to approve. A quick question or a comment, I guess, and I'll go Silva's motion after this. I would just add some examples of conflict of interest. I think probably all seven of us have a different idea of what that is, including the staff. So clear examples that might come up in real life would probably be helpful for council.
We can absolutely do that.
Okay. And we have a motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. City Manager, we are at 9F.
Thank you. Your final item for tonight is reconsideration of local regulations governing disclosure of campaign contributions. Lundy Stewart, your city attorney is here to make a presentation.
It does address disclosure of campaign contributions. Next slide, please. Thank you, you're on it. So as you recall, at your last council meeting, the city council did determine not to put limits on the amount of campaign contributions, or you adopted an unlimited campaign contribution limit. However, during council's consideration of that item, some council members were interested in imposing disclosure requirements on public officials who had received campaign contributions, which would obligate disclosure of those contributions prior to voting on an item involving that donor. So as we discussed at that meeting, state law currently places disclosure requirements on donors who have certain items pending before non-elected bodies of a local agency, so the Planning Commission, the Parks and Rec Commission in our case. The law also places disclosure and recusal requirements on public officials of those non-elected bodies when a current or previous donor has an item pending before that body. So if we can have the next slide, please. So again, this applies to non-elected bodies, and some of the requirements that we're talking about, first for donors, donors cannot make contributions of more than $250 to an officer of a body while an item is pending before the body or within three months after the final decision. And also, the donor must disclose any contribution of more than $250 made within the preceding 12 months by the donor to any officer of that agency when the agency is considering their item. With respect to public officials, the two major requirements are the public official may not accept, solicit, or direct a contribution of more than $250 from any donor that has an item pending before the agency for three months, pending before the agency or for three months after that final decision. And also, the public official must disclose contributions of more than $250 on the record and recuse him or herself from participation in the items involving the donor if the, if there was a contribution made within the preceding 12 months of consideration of the item. So currently, these restrictions and obligations, as I've mentioned, do not apply to fully-elected bodies such as the city council. And this was a concern, obviously, when we, when we discussed the contribution limits, and council was interested in exploring any requirements that could be placed on disclosure of those contributions. So there are some options that the council can consider. However, if we can have the next slide, please. There is currently a piece of legislation pending, it's SB 1439, and that's pending before the state legislature, and it addresses many of the disclosure concerns that the council has. So what would SB 1439 do, and how would it change things? First, it does broaden the disclosure requirements that we just discussed by changing the prohibition on receiving donations from three months to 12 months following a decision, and it also extends the prohibition on contributions to apply to contributions from a spouse of somebody who has an item pending, as long as that comes from a joint bank account. But really, most pertinent for this discussion is SB 1439 would extend all of those contribution, disclosure, and recusal requirements to an elected body, so they would all apply to, you know, the city council. Next slide, please. So as of today, the status of SB 1439, the bill has unanimously passed through the state senate, it's pending in an assembly committee. The last date to pass a bill through the legislature is August 31st, and then the governor has until October 1st to sign that pending legislation or veto the bill. If the bill is passed, it would become effective on January 1st, and after that date, all those disclosure and recusal requirements would apply to any donations that a council member would have received that are $250 or more. So they would reach back to this election cycle if there's a pending decision within 12 months after that, after that election cycle. So if I can have the next slide, please. In order to avoid potential duplication, overlap, confusion, and to ensure that the city has an enforceable disclosure ordinance or rules, if that's what the council decides to do, staff is recommending at this time kind of tabling this discussion until after we see what happens with SB 1439, and then we can tailor, or council can tailor, any additional requirements, or if the legislation doesn't pass, any requirements at all around that legislation. And with that, that's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Attorney Stewart. Any questions from the public, comments from the public? Yes, sir.
I did not anticipate speaking regarding this subject, but will this address in-kind donations, favors, memberships, and property use?
Great question, Stewart, thank you.
So the campaign contributions do, I believe they do have to report in-kind contributions. So volunteer hours, things like that would not be part of it, but anything that's reportable on their campaign disclosure funds would play into that, to the $250 limit.
Property Hawaii visit.
Well, that would be reportable as a gift. That's different, I think, than a campaign contribution, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Silva. Oh, sorry, hold on. Any other public comments? Sorry, rookie mistake. I'm closing public comment. Councilmember Silva.
Just go back to slide four. Just want to confirm it's spouse, like possession, not like multiple spouses?
What was that? The spouse?
Yeah. So if they only have one spouse, you're still elven.
Yeah.
That's a joke. And more serious matter, what if this results in less than a forum? Is there any insight on that for this, for this bill? So let's say there's a donation made to four electeds that serve. Is there any insight onto what that would?
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a good question. I could see, I could foresee that happening. There is a provision in the Political Reform Act that allows for votes to be taken by public officials that do have a conflict, that you have to follow a special procedure when it's legally required. So in that case, it would be legally required that one or more of those disqualified council members would have to vote, so we would go through a process to determine, to determine who that or those council members would be that were able to vote.
That'll be fun. All right, thank you.
I guess I don't necessarily have a question. I mean, I have some, some comments and thoughts. You know, I think it's really interesting that the rules apply to non-elected, right, so a group of politicians that were elected made this rule that doesn't apply to them. You know, I am pretty suspect on the likelihood of SB 1439 actually passing. Again, same logic, you know, a group that, just kind of, kind of watchdogging. So it's interesting, it's passed through the senate, we'll see if it dies in committee, which I have a feeling it will. I am really interested in this and transparency. I think if certain groups, especially special interest groups that business with the city want to donate to folks, that's great, but it should be disclosed as you're making multimillion-dollar votes or voting on new developments or things, the public deserves to know. And I've seen it time and time again in local politics where big checks are cut and big deals are made, and, you know, that's okay, but the public doesn't know, and that's not fair. So I guess what I'm asking is if you can really just watchdog this, I'd like this to come back the second we hear that it's, it dies in committee, if it does, or if it passes. As a short timer, I'd really like to get this addressed before I go. And so this is, this is something in Vacaville that's really bugged me for a long time, and I think the public has a right to know, and I've seen it firsthand. And so, you know, if folks want to support folks, or organizations, or people want to support folks, the public deserves to know before they vote on a major deal, because I, it's just important. So I guess my only request is that you come back to us ASAP, as soon as we hear, and it sounds like we've got about a month or so to figure that out.
At a minimum.
But I hope we can get this on an agenda quickly in September, depending on the outcome of whatever the House does.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, my question was, did, did it, does the senate bill, I'm not familiar with the senate bill, 1439, does it discuss any of the penalties for violating the terms that were listed here that they're, that they're adding?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't have that discussion in the bill.
Okay. Good?
Yeah.
Do we need action? Sorry, can you go to the last slide?
No, I was just recommending that the item be tabled, so if, you know, if the council's okay with that, I don't think we need...
Okay, I think we're, I think we're good. It sounds like a plan. We are moving out of item nine and into item 10. Reports of city manager.
Nothing really formally for me. I just would like to, you know, congratulate the council, even though shorthanded tonight, you got through it, so nicely done. And then lastly, I'll just acknowledge Carrie Walker and her work here with the city. Carrie, it's been a pleasure working with you, and I wish you all the best in your, in your retirement, so best wishes. That's all I have.
Thank you, City Manager, I appreciate that. So we're closing item 10. We don't do public comment on that, do we?
No.
No, thank you, sorry. Sorry.
Thanks for checking in.
Newbie, I'm a newbie. You'll be a bit oldie. Item number 11, reports city council. Do my peers have any reports or comments? Councilmember Stockton, what do you got?
Yes, I wanted to make sure that we recognized the Vacaville American Little League 11 U team. Their all-star team won the District 64 championship, and then went on to win NorCal Section to represent Section 1, and they are currently competing. I haven't got a score update since the council meeting, but they are currently competing in the California Little League State Championship. These are some incredible young athletes that are representing our city, making us proud, and... us proud, and I'm sure them and their parents are, uh, are as excited as we are to see them succeed in this, uh, arena of athletics and represent our city. I know it's been hot, but they've been playing really well, and, uh, I think they only have a couple more games before, um, they're in the, the championship for, for the state championship as well, so very excited about that. I also wanted to remind everybody that I believe it's August 2nd is National Night Out, um, a great opportunity to get to meet your neighbors, meet some of our, um, our public safety folks, and elected officials will be running out and visiting the many different, uh, block parties and stuff that are going to be going on. I'm excited, uh, and very appreciative of the police department kind of Ubering us around the different parties, um, just to, just to interact with folks and let them know about the great work that, that all of you are doing here. So, um, if you're interested in having a block party, I believe Amber over at the police department, it has been, uh, a very, very busy young lady organizing all of the, uh, different events and looking forward to meeting everyone and seeing everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stockton. Councilmember Ritchie?
Anticipation of knowing that I was being able to talk that much, I really appreciate. Thank you, Roy, for, uh, highlighting the people, the groups, kids. So I tried to like be proactive and, um, I'm, I'm actually broadcasting the game right now, and then there's like little highlights, but, um, the National Night Out is the other thing I was very, very excited about. Amber contacted me and thought that she missed me. I was, I was out of the country, same place actually, my class, visiting my, my brown brothers down south, but, um, but, um, I absolutely, I think it's awesome, the National Night Out, something that I attended last year. But, um, so the irony of it, I dressed up as Officer Hightower from the eighties, and yeah, and I will, I will be doing that again, and I, I love the fact that his role doesn't talk, they probably won't talk that either. So I'll just, I'll be there, show my support to the community. And I actually had an opportunity to talk to, uh, an officer at, out at the Horse Creek, and we were just talking ideas, um, you know, one of the things I want to mention to the community is maybe rethink how we hire. I had an opportunity to attend the hiring, like, was it six firefighters? Like six, it was amazing. But I was talking to the officer about, like, my experience of being heavily recruited in football, and you're allowed legally, back then, to three recruiting trips, and they were crazy, and they went all out. And I think I would love for, like, Public Works, the fire, sorry, and police to be able to have a different approach to how they, how they hire people. How they hire people in the city. You know, we want to recruit the best, so we got to find people to be more proactive and kind of allow the recruiters to go out to these communities, these events, other cities, um, and really try to engage these, uh, young men and women to come to our city and make it fun. Like, I don't come to Vacaville and have like a, a week in the life of being a resident. They're able to stay in our hotel, they get picked up, they get a day in the life of as officer firefighter, Public Works, they get to see, like, what would you do in the weekends, where would you go, how would you just hang out? And that's the whole experience, and we want to be the best, we have to try to recruit the best, and we have to really try to step up our game to hire, because we're going to be forcing pretty soon some pretty crazy, uh, um, exits of people who are naturally going to leave the city through retirement and other ways, but so I just want to be, be a supporter for the city, be able to back our police, fire, and Public Works to recruit in more aggressive ways that actually can show what is it like to live in Vacaville? And if you come here, this is the experience you're going to have. And so I s- I just wanted to maybe put the inception of how they can kind of, you know, the tool we did a few months ago for the $20,000 bonus, that was awesome. Well, let's keep going, so we can make sure we hire the best and recruit them, because, you know, we're going to raise every other city to get the same talent. So we got to, we got to step up. So I s- I just had a great conversation with him. I kind of relayed being recruited in football as compared to how we're going for the best of the best, we got to approach with our A-game, or else we're not going to get the A-players. So that's it. I almost want to talk all day, but, all right.
Thank you, Councilmember Ritchie. Councilmember Silva?
Uh, thank you. Um, I'm actually kind of just piggybacking off, off of those comments. Um, I think just in general, uh, you know, just having, really instilling and embracing the sense of duty, a sense of citizenship. I mean, there's a lot of folks in this room here that have committed their careers towards public service. Um, money is, income's one thing, it's necessary, uh, but the fact that you can truly transform lives is, is another key component to it all. Uh, some of those young men on the team that you mentioned, I've had the privilege of, um, being their coach in fall ball through our parks directly, uh, in years past. Uh, so, um, coming back after being out for almost two months, um, it was really cool to see that. Uh, and just to kind of echo that, one thing that I've noticed in a lot of, so part of me traveling, uh, was really getting the chance to talk to other local electeds and seeing how, uh, things are done in, in different, uh, different communities and what their issues were. And miraculously enough, uh, while they don't have some of the bigger, uh, larger media things that kept trickling in, um, through my limited media, uh, or, um, you know, cell service and whatnot, uh, was that, uh, when, you know, kids don't have opportunities to develop, uh, opportunities to earn a good living, a lot of times they resort to other issues, whether it be, um, uh, drugs, uh, whether it be, uh, what results from that as far as robbing, uh, a lot of, um, you know, local businesses, and you see the, the, uh, the struggles that a lot of local business owners are, are having to, to deal with. Um, you know, there's a lot of, this country has, uh, it really does, it really is this beacon, um, for better and worse, uh, for, for a majority of the world, uh, from music, from foods, uh, from culture, from government, uh, how we organize our government, um, and, uh, and local processes. And, um, there truly is a lot of good people throughout this world, and, uh, you know, and I, you know, and that's, uh, I don't know, for, for me, I'm still trying to process a, a lot of that. So kind of echoing, uh, for what, um, Councilmember Ritchie's sharing, is I think the more that we as a community can, can, uh, understand that sometimes we have to do things because it's our duty, uh, because it's part of being an American citizen, uh, not just in America, but also in our, in our world, uh, that's how we set our kids up to lead the change that we need to keep things going well, that are going well, and to improve things, um, that, that need to be improved to improve those. Uh, I will say a lot of folks, we, we have a lot of opportunities, a lot of social programs in here, here, uh, that don't exist elsewhere, and you see people out there hustling, um, you know, trying to sell whatever they can through streets, you know, putting their own lives at risk and, and whatnot, just to make sure that they got some type of income. And, um, you know, that, that's, uh, you know, it's, it's truly something commendable and, um, really interesting just to see how, where you're born, uh, what borders you're born at, and the opportunities to pursue, uh, what comes about. Uh, I will say that, you know, a, a lot of times folks are looking at, uh, you know, that easy way out, and for a lot of folks, uh, there is no easy way out. Uh, you have to work, you got to put the work in. Um, and, uh, one effort that I just, uh, you know, kind of getting caught up to date on different things, we have the Health Education Council that council honestly approved to support. They've been out in the community getting feedback. Um, there's a backpack giveaway, so if any folks out there have, um, are looking to help out, uh, to contribute, donate some type of backpacks or goods for kids, um, school equipment, or just want to get some word out on your organization, there's on, uh, August 11th, uh, there's a backpack giveaway at Arkham Elementary School. Uh, quite often, um, anything that's extra not taken, uh, that absolutely is shared with other schools. Um, but being the large, largest elementary school, the largest Title One, meaning lowest income school in our, in our city, uh, quite often they're kind of, sometimes they're a hub, uh, for, uh, valuable donations that kids, um, can use, uh, in different ways. So, um, I'll be out there, August 11th. I'll be out there barbecue, or hopefully barbecuing, uh, on the National Night Out. Um, and I expect, um, Councilmember Stockton to dress up like Lieutenant Dangle, uh, from Reno 911 to match, uh, Hightower over here. So thank you.
I'll buy the outfit if we'll do it. Okay, thank you, thank you, Piers. Um, so, um, so in about 12 days, I will officially be a lame duck. Um, I will not be running for reelection in the city of Vacaville. Um, I got a promotion at work that I was not looking for, and one of the contingencies for that promotion was that I leave my council seat. So the, originally it was quit immediately, and luckily it got knocked down to write out through December, so I think that'll make some folks very happy, and that'll make some folks not so happy. And, um, it's been a, a really long and crazy three, almost four years. Um, feel like I need another 10, you know, to kind of get some stuff knocked out. So, um, I have a couple requests tonight, um, sort of, uh, requests to agendize some items before I go. So I've got six months left. Um, I'm not asking you to approve these items tonight, I'm asking you to give, uh, indication on whether or not you support them. All I'm asking for is the professional respect to agendize discussions on these items and kind of lay them to bed before I write off into the sunset in December. So I've got six items. Sorry, city manager, I told you about two, um, but you'll get a surprise on four. Um, it, and I, you know, I'm going to go out big. I came in big, I'm going out big. So I hope you guys will support me at least having a discussion. I'm not asking you to support it, I'm not asking for anything crazy, I'm just asking to agendize these at a council meeting before I leave is, is all I'm asking for. So first and foremost, and most importantly, uh, you guys know homelessness has been a huge issue for me, it's been close to my heart, uh, it's, it's my passion, it's my life. For 15 years, I've worked in social services. We have 1.3 million earmarked for a navigation center, kind of homeless project of sorts. There's no details really worked out. Councilmember Stockton and I have been putting a ton of work with the city two by two, and now the county collective group. We have 100 people in Vacaville that are homeless, they need a place to go pee, they need a place to access their meds, they need a place to access substance abuse services and access shelter eventually. I'm not asking to support anything, but I'm asking you to at least allow to have a discussion on next steps, um, on the navigation center. So I'd like to ask to agendize, uh, discussion between now and before I leave on the navigation center, the budget we have, and, and maybe progress and updates on homeless services. So that's my first motion I'd like to make. Uh, can I have a second? I've got a motion, a second. All those in favor? Thank you, I really appreciate it. Uh, this, the second project that I'm very interested in and is very important and close to my heart, you know, much like Councilmember Silva's been doing a lot of work at Trower Neighborhood Park, on the Trower Center, uh, I got to tell you guys, Alamo Gardens is, is probably the worst place for a kid to grow up in Vacaville. It is absolutely terrible. Um, the complex is rundown, it has defunct property management, I probably am not supposed to say some of those from the dais, but it is embarrassing. Uh, so to the owners of that, that particular group, um, they, they need to show up and do something for those kids, but also the city needs to do something. They have no access to parks, they have no access to recreation facilities. That section of Alamo is the most dangerous section, or one of the most dangerous sections in town. We've had vehicle on pedestrian collisions, we have active sex workers walking the streets, we have homeless folks with mental health crises. I really would like to bring the Mariposa Center back to something special. I've engaged with Emily in some discussions. It's not going to be easy, it's actually going to be very complicated. Um, I've also started a process, uh, with Rika, who's not here tonight, but Rika's amazing, um, with my district dollars to get safe streets and safe accessways for pedestrians on that strip of Alamo, basically between Peabody and Alamo and down to Payden School. Payden School is sadly the only school in Vacaville where two kids died in a traffic collision in front of the school. I would really like to have a placeholder discussion on some sort of Mariposa project, Mariposa idea before I go, and I want to get a placeholder locked in. I know that city manager's probably not ready for this discussion just yet, but I want to get something locked in before I write off, just in case my predecessor doesn't care about it, or it's not a priority. But the second item I'm asking for tonight to agendize is a, a placeholder for a Mariposa Neighborhood Project Center Plan, uh, discussion. Can I have a second? Sure. Well, do, how does that work? Should I just rat them all out, or?
Yeah, we can do that, and then come back to a formal vote.
Okay. All right. So my, my third, um, since, uh, two years prior to council, I've had Anna Eaton, I've had other nonprofits, I've had past council members, past folks, talk to me about Measure M and giving nonprofits some funding. I'm not saying I'm advocating for them to get funding or not, they came again tonight to ask for it. I think we need to give them a formal answer. I'd like to have the discussion in public and give them a formal yes or no instead of stringing them along for five years. So I'd like to agendize a discussion on Measure M and how we want to, or if we don't want to give that to nonprofits in some way, shape, or form. Again, not asking for you to support that tonight, I just think we owe these nonprofits to continue to come back time and time again, call us, ask for meetings. We owe them a formal answer, and so I'd like to get that sussed out publicly before I go. Um, and again, you know, just, just give them their time to just add some finality to that topic. Yes, please.
Um, city manager, are we, uh, my understanding is we're going to have a talk on Measure M funding at some point? Uh, if so.
Well, the, the, the future conversation for Measure M was in regards to, um, parks and recreation facilities. Um, if, if there's a desire to use Measure M funds in a different manner, um, budget time is a real good time to have that conversation, and we just recently completed that. So, um, you know, i- if that's something that you want to talk about specifically for nonprofits, um, we can certainly bring that back, but I would suggest, you know, more appropriately around mid-year or something along those na- you know, nature. Um, so I hope that answers your question.
Okay, keep, I'll keep rolling, sorry. I've got three more. Um, cannabis, I would love to have cannabis wrapped up, it's been four years, I've been on council the entire time, I think Measure V passed the same time I got elected. I want to see cannabis in Vacaville, and I've, it, or I want to see cannabis fail, so I'm hoping maybe we can have cannabis come forward. I know we have a new staff member, it's not going to happen, probably? Maybe? Well, we'll see. Anyways, i- ideally, some sort of next step on cannabis would be fantastic in the next six months, um, even if it's not finality, maybe an update, um, and if that's not possible, that's fine. Uh, my next item is, um, this actually came up in my day job, and it's coming up all over Northern California cities, counties, and other areas. I really think our staff, especially the staff that really stuck it out with us for the last two or three years, um, deserve a little love in terms of COVID. Um, I know the bargaining process typically deals with city benefits and things of that sort. I would like to have a formal discussion with council, though, on whether or not we'd even like to entertain the idea of a COVID bonus or COVID leave. Um, that's never formally been brought up to us as an option. I, I personally think there is some significance in, in, in supporting our staff after three years of COVID. Um, and so we're having this discussion in my day job, I, I'd like to have a discussion, you know, or, or maybe it's somehow offline, where we talk about whether or not council is interested in, in pursuing COVID bonuses or COVID leave for staff that have worked through the pandemic. Um, that's my, my fifth one, and my last one, and this one's a spicy one, this one's a zinger. Um, so the city of Woodland, the city of Davis, and Yolo County, actually just today, um, actually, let me give you some context to where this came from. So I was looking on, uh, the Vacaville Police Department Facebook page this week or last week, I'm not sure exactly which day it was, and it was a whole compilation of guns, stolen guns, lots and lots of guns that were recovered from either residential burglaries or recovered from vehicle burglaries, a- and it's terrifying. And I think that we've seen, especially on social media through our police department, the proliferation of stolen guns and recovered firearms in Vacaville. And frankly, as a father, it's, it's sort of terrifying. So it dawned on me today, you know, at a, at a Yolo County Board of Supervisors meeting, as they were passing a safe storage ordinance, that it actually kind of makes sense in Vacaville. I know anything with guns is contentious, I know it's crazy, I've actually asked the city attorney to do, just to, is this even a possibility? Um, it's been passed in the last three months in the city of Woodland, the city of Davis, and now Yolo County. Again, it has nothing to do with taking away guns, disarming rights, but a conversation on whether or not a safe storage ordinance in town makes sense, and all three of these programs have also done safe lock distributions, where they've given out 200 to 300 blocks for folks to safely store their guns. Um, with the amount of stolen guns our police department recovers, um, we've got to do a better job securing those firearms, in my opinion. And other cities around us, like I said, in the last two or three months are passing these ordinances, um, today. Uh, one passed in Yolo County for the whole county this afternoon. Um, and again, other local cities are doing this too. So nothing to do with gun access or anything like that, I, I, I would hope that anyone on the, the gun argument can agree that safe storage and being a responsible gun owner is, is a great thing. Um, and so that is something I would like to at least agendize a discussion on at some point in time, whether or not the full council supports that or not, um, is, is, you know, term that later, but.
I guess I'm confused, only because there's California penal codes and vehicle codes that already establish storage laws.
And typically they're for handguns, and there's, there's some loopholes there and some other regulatory kind of drops. Um, I had kind of the same question. There's also some difference with, with vehicles and other pieces, um, that there's, there's some, some pretty major holes. And so the city, like I said, the city of Woodland, the city of Davis, and Yolo County just today passed their own ordinances to kind of fill those gaps. And so, I mean, ideally, maybe the city attorney can do some research, and maybe it's not necessary, but these other two cities in the county, like I said, just passed the, passed the, and maybe it's ceremonial and, and smoke and mirrors, but you know, again, it is, it is starting to happen. And so um I, I'd like to at least have an agendized discussion and have staff do some research before I go if possible, but I, maybe the, the issue's already covered.
I'm just trying to figure out what, what's different than what currently exists because
Sure.
Um, there's a ton of gun laws on the books
Sure.
that cover storage and transportation and a plethora of other things too, um, uh whether it's in a car or in a home
Right.
and who the individual is. So I'm just curious as to what these look like before.
I could definitely get you some more detail. So yeah, so um, and, and the other piece, like you said, Councilmember Stockton too, is there's a bajillion laws on the books, but whether or not citizens know or they're, you know, that's a whole nother ball.
I just want to make sure that any stored, like, like the, the, the bells that are ringing in my head are Fourth Amendment issues revolving around um people, you know, going and confirming whether or not things are stored and things like that.
Sure, absolutely. No, I, I totally agree. And I, and I, all these other cities in the county had to figure this out. So just something as, as a father, um, it, it worries me. So anyways, guys, I know that's a lot. Um, I apologize again. I'll be here for six more months. I feel like I've got much more to do. I'm not asking for you to support any of these items. I'm just asking for a public discussion before I go. I hope you will support me in allowing those to be agendized within the next couple of months before my term ends in December. Stop talking.
Mine was kind of along with the Stockton. Um, I've been noticing too, like different communities are having like gun turn program, like buyback programs, tournament.
Sure.
But that's, but that's, you know, it's totally different than like storing a gun. I mean, there's, there's a lot of laws where in the books. I think, I don't think we get confused where, are you asking to start a gun, a buyback program, like no questions asked in Vacaville? Or find a way to start monitoring people on how they're actually storing guns. And we have ten thousand free, you know, trigger locks for handguns. It goes through the barrel and all the good stuff. Is that what you want?
It's already required.
Yeah, it's already required. But I mean, a lot of gun laws, I mean, for four dollars, I can go to Ace Hardware and buy a file and scrape off the serial number. You have a ghost gun. I, I think criminals are not stupid. They're crazy. Well, some are stupid. Um, it's not going to stop, it's not going to stop people having illegal guns or doing things with it. Um, I, I don't know. What is put in this law? I mean, if you want to buy back guns, no questions asked. If someone walks up and there's a, it's filed down, we'll take it back and buy it back to them. And then is that the program we want? Or we, and now impose a new program? How we're going to check on people's houses is kind of crazy.
Well, no, and I'm not suggesting anything of the sort. I'm suggesting we look at other local ordinances that are in place and, and actually towns that are probably more conservative and gun-friendly than Vacaville. And there, there's a common sense reason they implement them. So I, I agree with you guys. And I don't have any of the facts, the details. I just know it's being passed in several municipalities within the last couple of months around us. And I know that there's a ton of stolen guns in Vacaville. And I know that there's school shootings and all sorts of other things. And it feels like as local electeds, we're just sitting back. And so for me, this just made sense today. It kind of clicked. We may have a presentation and it doesn't make sense and you guys vote no. I'm not saying that I need you to support it today. You could say this is the craziest thing ever. All I'm talking about is, is would you allow us to have a formal discussion, allow staff to do some research prior to me leaving?
On, on buybacks or on educating people how to, how to store them?
All I'm asking for is safe storage ordinance today. But I mean, buybacks and things could be included, but I'm just asking for safe, honestly, if we took Woodlands, Davis, and Yolo County Safe Storage Ordinance and took a look at it and had our police department take a look and it made sense and it was practical and maybe it could save one life, that's all I'm asking. And if you want to add buybacks or other things to the discussion, that's great. But I'm just asking safe storage and locks.
I guess for me, I, I'd like to discuss this more before we agendize it.
Okay.
But I'm not saying that I'm against having a discussion. I just think that um for the sake of time and all of the things that we have on. I mean, there's four of us today and this went relatively quick
Sure.
today. But that's not par for the course for us. So I, my concern is just um whether or not that's going to kick something else off an agenda knowing that we have very little influence over that, that item or that topic. So.
I, I don't disagree with you. It's just my clock's ticking. So it's just every, every delay for me is, you know, so anyways, but I, whatever you guys vote, that's fine. You know, again, I'm just asking for a discussion. I'm asking for you to sanction or approve any of these items. I'm just hoping to get them on the agenda before I go.
I will tell you that I absolutely want to have the co- conversation about Measure M. I brought that up during council comments as well. Whether or not we're going to have a three by three, whether or not we can do more beautiful amenities to parks like we saw today throughout the city. Um, so I would, I, I certainly would love to have that conversation. And um, as far as the uh Mariposa Center, Alamo Gardens project, I'm interested to hear how we can help beautify an area in our community where there are maybe some uh kids that are helpless to do more. So those are, that's all I have.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yep.
Can I jump in real quick?
Sure.
Seeing as how four of these were uh probably totally new. Um, so just some thoughts before you take a formal vote on them. So um, as we talked about, we're working on uh your second item in terms of what we can and cannot do and be happy to give the council an update on that. As far as specifically with regards to Measure M and nonprofits, um, if you recall, um, as part of your discussions with ARPA funding, um, there was an element that was included, you know, allocating nonprofits uh funding. And so that is an item that we'll be bringing back to the council um in August. And I think that, you know, that's probably a good place to start on that conversation.
Okay.
Um, again, Measure M is part of your budget discussions. And so we have talked about it. The big picture, as Councilmember Stockton mentions, um, is something that um I'm still working on because it is a big issue. Um, in terms of uh, you know, that, that overall uh objective.
I think really, really quickly on that, City Manager, my goal here is pretty narrow on that Measure M piece. It really is just giving those nonprofits that keep asking us, giving them a final answer.
Well, and, and what I'm suggesting is, is that I think we're going to broach that topic of assistance in the ARPA discussion versus Measure M.
Okay.
And so if that's not sufficient for the council, then we can certainly, you know,
Okay, so that's how you can speak and you can bring it up and yada, yada, yada.
The, the, it's just a thought for consideration.
I like that.
Um, cannabis, unfortunately, I think, you know, staff resources right now um are, are thin to, to get to that one. Um, and there's a, still a lot of moving pieces on that one. So we, we can see what we'll do. Um, with regards to the COVID relief, again, that's something that might be, um, I need to check with our HR department and see how that works with, you know, our, our bargaining agreements and so forth that we've already approved and all. But again, that might be another topic for discussion when we bring ARPA back.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll put that, you know, as part of the dialogue uh for ARPA.
Okay.
And, and then hopefully that knocks off or addresses a couple of these.
Can we research dollars and leave on that? I mean, just, I'm curious about both. Like, if we can't give money, can we give time?
I'll do that. I'll have that conversation with our HR department.
Thank you.
So with that, I think, you know, a couple of these, we can, you know, indirectly address.
Okay.
Um, and so I don't know if you still want to get formal, you know, motions on these or not, but I think we can tackle a couple of these. Uh, one of them, you know, the cannabis, I think, is going to be difficult.
Alright, so I'm going to, I'm going to drop the cannabis off. I'll drop the COVID off. It sounds like Measure M will be covered in ARPA. Um, uh, I, I would like some sort of placeholder on Mariposa if possible. Navigation Center, I think you guys approved. And then I think safe storage will probably get shot down, but I'd like a yes or no if, if possible. So um, can we, uh, Mariposa placeholder? Does that sound reasonable?
I'll say it.
Okay.
One is fine. I'm not clear on what I'm intending for last request.
We're just talking about Mariposa.
Yeah.
Yeah, one is fine.
So we'll just go item to item because I think we'll have disagreements on a couple. So Navigation Center was a yes. Mariposa, so I had motion and a second. Is all in favor? Yes? Okay, so that passes. We're dropping Measure M for the ARPA discussion. Cannabis, I'm going to give up on. COVID will come up in ARPA. So safe storage, what I'm asking for is to take a look at the Woodland, Davis, and Yolo County ordinances and see if they make sense and bring a brief flip back to council to see if we want to further investigate or drop it.
Oring guns, or buying them back?
Just, just storage.
Before we agendize it. But I'm happy to talk offline, learn more about what it is that.
We're a buyback. Ghost guns, hot guns, that's one thing. But to spend money, I, I don't know, spend money to people to restore their own guns.
No, that's fine. I mean, we, we've, we've got any no's or it fails twice. So I guess we got a no. Yep, okay. So we'll keep moving. Um, that is it unless you guys have other announcements that you want to make. Uh, we do not have a closed session tonight for item twelve. And uh, item number thirteen is adjournment. Uh, do I just bang the hammer? Yep. Alright, we are adjourned.